As of today, you are low on tow.
That's probably a good way to handle that.
We also don't have central air, so.
Oh, I will not live without some.
Okay, yep.
I didn't die until I was twenty-four years old.
It is eight o'clock, so let's, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and if everyone can stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public discussion, anyone going, going, gone, alright. Yeah, discussion there, decision approval of the agenda in minutes. We have a motion by Stecker, second by Garmin. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, and opposed, motion carries unanimous. Okay, we're up to the claims and conservation claims. Take a second to look at them, or if everyone has. You obtain a motion at any point? Okay, we have a motion by Haas to approve claims.
I'll second.
Second by Garmin. Discussion on the claims.
Um, I do have a couple notes here.
Sure.
First one in the engineers department, looks like we rented an excavator for a couple weeks, does anyone know what that was for?
Let me get it over in here.
I don't, I don't remember ever hearing about that. And we got one excavator that's almost brand new.
With a page three on tile.
Oh.
Top right.
And that would be sixteen.
Sixteen. Excavator rental from Earpings.
Yep.
I don't know. Did you wanna call Doug and ask him, or?
We could, I just figured I'd ask if anyone else knew anything about it.
I do not.
Didn't.
I do not. Do you wanna ask him before approving the claims, or?
Sure.
Alright, Josh, would you wanna call Doug?
Are you, I see page sixteen, where you have.
Earpeling Excavating Enterprises is the. Were you on the claims or on the packet?
On the claims.
Hey Doug, it's Joshua, I'm here in the boardroom, um, just, we have a question on the claims, if you would mind.
Yeah, so that's the location, which is right there.
Yeah, alright, thanks.
Yeah. Scroll off one. There. No, 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 that's not it.
That's Earpeling, but that's not it.
No. I don't know why your patient was different.
I'm looking at the right page.
Go down, I'm looking at the right page. Oh, no, you are, yep, you are on the wrong side.
Oh.
It's easy to do that.
Yep.
It is.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. I didn't catch that right away either.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Doug.
Good morning.
Yeah, we got a question?
Yeah, um, for our claim tier day, it shows Earpeling Excavating Enterprises for, says a cat excavator rental for two weeks.
Correct.
I didn't know that we rented one, or what was that for?
Uh, part of it was to, uh, clean ditches that had, we needed longer reach than what our own machine did for FEMA, and then I think we used it for two culvert replacements, again, our machines did not, uh, would not, didn't have the capacity to lift some of the pipes.
It was their long reach, or?
No, it was just a larger excavator than what Cassous County owns.
Okay. Um, then, there's also one in here for, um, Dakota Supply Group and not, it looks like Winter something Curve Guard, do you know what those are?
Is that, do you just have the printout, or?
We have like a summary, I mean, we don't have the actual bill.
I, I believe that's what is put on some of our, uh, equipment to protect the edges and the, the ground engaging equipment so that, uh, it, it's on the edges there, some protections.
Is that something for new trucks, or is that something that wears out and it's a?
It wears out, it's there, it's there to wear first, so it protects anything else.
I didn't, I didn't know if that was with the new trucks, because it also done.
That's, that's typical about all ground engaging equipment, it's, it's on there to wear, so you don't wear out other parts.
Okay. Um, and then I guess the, um, tow mast or trailer, I don't remember the stuff we approved, but there, it looked like there was extra for jacks.
We, we did order a double jack instead of a single on that.
Okay.
I think about a four thousand, forty-five hundred dollar.
Yeah. Thirty-six hundred dollars.
Thirty-six, okay.
Line item, okay. Yeah, I just was curious on those, a couple.
Anything else?
Any other questions for Doug on his claims? Nope, thanks Doug.
Thanks.
Anything else for the claims? If not, I would, uh, or all in favor of approving the claims, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, nay, motion carries unanimous. Okay. Yep. Up to the budget status report, Tammy had a few things in our packet today, um, everyone have a chance to go through them, and we can talk more about them during budget workshops as well. Yep. The record reflect, we acknowledge that. And monthly update from Veterans Affairs, is Dan coming this morning, do we know, or?
I don't know, let me see if he said he was gonna be out of the office, sometimes he'll let me know if he's out of the office, let me see if I have an email from him. He's usually pretty good about being here early, so.
Mm-hmm. We can always come back to it too, so. Alright. Let's go ahead and move on, and if Dan comes, we can go back to that. Discussion decision approving the hiring of Sanitarian applicant. So we have, we have, uh, an applicant that's been offered the position, if I understand correctly.
Yep.
And. We. Does anyone have something to say, I was not involved in the interview process there?
Um, yeah, I was gonna try and find, no, I, he did respond that he is interested, so, um.
He is interested in the position and being offered the job?
Yep.
Okay.
If there's any discussion, otherwise, um, I'd make a motion to hire Corey Peterson for the Sanitarian Weed Commissioner and Planning and Zoning Job Position.
Okay, we have a motion by Stecker to hire Corey Peterson to fill the Sanitarian Weed Commissioner and Planning and Zoning Administrator Job Position. Anyone wanna second that? I'll second. We have a second by Whacter, any discussion, questions, concerns, anything?
You're gonna need help, I'm sure of that.
Yep.
Make sure we give it to them.
Yep.
So, okay, well, if no further discussion, all in favor of hiring Corey as the new Sanitarian Weed Commissioner and Planning and Zoning Administrator, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, nay, motion carries unanimous. Okay, Tammy, will you, um, communicate with, with him then?
Yep, and I did have, he did send me an email on Friday, um, and it sounds like his start date could be, if you guys approve the hiring this morning, um, the tenth of February, I think is what he said.
Okay.
Um, and so I will, if you wish, get ahold of Ben Huntley and see if he is available for training.
Yeah.
Sure.
Definitely.
That would be very helpful, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
Yeah, we'll definitely need a warm hand over there.
Okay, sounds good, then I will, I will do that.
Okay. Thank you, and we will move on to the Treasurer's Semiannual Report, do we need to call Nick in for this?
Yeah.
Can you just grab him, that'd be fine. These claims, are these signed here?
Yes, there's eight credit card.
Okay, okay.
Don't check your date, because when you left it, I went to stamp it. You had the four and the one backwards, and so it said January forty-first.
Oh.
So it's like, eh, that's not the right date.
I paid someone's attention.
He was just coming.
Okay, alright. There you go, here I'm.
Morning, Nick.
Good morning, Nick. We're up to the Semiannual Report.
Okay. Yeah, I'm assuming you've all seen it.
Yep.
Great, great, so, well. Okay, it looks like, um, this is from time period July first, uh, twenty twenty-four to, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and, um, it lists the different funds, uh, in the general ledger and things like that, and then, we have a beginning balance, um, as of July first, and you can see that, that's twenty-three million, two hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, ninety-two cents. We had revenues, um, from the six months of forty-four million, uh, sixty-three thousand, nine hundred forty-four, forty-five cents. And disbursements, forty-two million, four hundred forty-four, four hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred seven dollars, forty-two cents for ending balance as of, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, is uh, twenty-four million, eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, and the last column, it's just auditors warrants outstanding, those are warrants that have not been cashed yet, or, or called in, so, any questions on the first page?
In my previous life, I would turn that back around, is there anything we should be noticing, because I don't know what I should be noticing, nothing abnormal?
No.
You would let us know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yep, yep.
You have, you have a good question, thanks. So, and then it goes on, um, the second page, it'd be the revenues, um, that, uh, make up the, I'm not, that we took in, and on the third page, um, uh, we continue with the revenues, and then it goes on to the expenses, and I don't know, does anyone have any questions on that, there's nothing, you know?
Nothing to notice.
No, no, pretty boring.
It's probably boring whether there's something to notice or not, but thank you for the answer, man.
Okay, any other thing to note there?
I don't think so, just, uh, just the normal semiannual.
Okay.
We're under the seven million mark for drainage now, so.
Yeah.
But it's a step in the right direction.
That is good.
You're talking about that figure on the first page for second warrants outstanding, is what we're talking about, okay, alright.
Very good, well, can we get a motion to approve the Treasurer's Semiannual Report?
Sure.
Motion by Haas, second by Stecker. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, say nay, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, we'll get it published.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too, thanks.
Okay, up to discussion decision approval of liquor license for bottom of the cup LLC. This is out across the May Bay, isn't it, is that what that is?
This is the country club.
That's the country club, that's.
Well, the address for this, says, says we're out there, doesn't it?
I left the name, I'm pretty sure they're operating.
Hundred and sixtieth Avenue, that'd be.
No, three, three oh two Robinson Drive.
Mailing address, that was address of premises, though.
Yeah.
They might live at the country club, because that's.
Eagle, Eagle, I saw announcements for Eagle.
Burns's, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think this is the one out by Oak Lake.
Are they gonna, I, I don't, I'm asking, I don't, I don't pretend to know, but are they gonna operate at both places, and are they, are they movable from one location to another? The license?
No, they're, they're, uh, licenses for, they have the, I think a golf.
I know what's out there.
Deal, okay.
But I'm under the impression, and they might be active and they need it now, but I'm under the impression they're moving that into the country club, but.
Oh, they are, okay.
I'm under the impression.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was aware.
Yeah, this is a yearly thing that they have to.
Okay, so they're probably still out there and need it, alright.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I'd entertain a motion to approve their liquor license for bottom of the cup. Motion by Garmin.
I'll second.
Second by Whacter, any further discussion?
Is there a reason you do or do not approve in general, has there ever been one you didn't approve?
That's what I've seen.
Okay, that's, that's not.
Probably wouldn't be brought in here if it wasn't complete.
Yeah, I mean, they have to have a paperwork together, but that should be done before it gets here, or, or at least it would be brought up in discussion that it's not complete, that they filed it this way or something, as long as it's completed, I haven't seen one that would happen approved.
Yep. Okay, anything else? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, say nay, motion carries unanimous, and then we have another liquor license to approve for North Cassous Golf Club. Motion by Stecker to approve that, and I'll second his motion. Any discussion on that one?
Another question?
Yes.
So, we only approve the ones that are outside the city limits, or, or we do everything countywide, or, any of the North Cassous Golf Club outside the city limits?
No, that would be within the city limits, Bancroft, and we can do everything countywide, I think as part of the code, they have to submit to the county.
You do out there too? Okay.
I don't think that, no.
No, we don't do.
Every, every bar in Cassous County does not submit to the county for, um, a liquor license approval, so I don't really, that, that's a great question, Howard, I'm not sure how that works.
We don't do like pep's and.
Yeah, Billy Joe's, and, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we don't do those.
I'll have to look back.
I've never seen the handlebar in Fluxide, I mean, I just, I don't know how.
Is it a function of whether or not the city council wants to handle it, or they, they pass it off, or we don't know?
We could do some checking and talk to.
Uh, we don't need to drop that over.
Right, right, but that's a good question, though, because I think there's only maybe five of them throughout the year, and there's a lot more than five places that serve liquor in Cassous County.
Oh, no, we do more than that in a year.
Roger, you don't have to know.
We just don't do for the cities, we don't do for the.
Okay.
That's what I think.
We, we don't do the cities, the cities take care of their own.
Well, this would be the location of where that is, would be in the city limits, Bancroft.
North Cassous, is it in the city limits?
Well, I wonder if, at least.
Bancroft address would be just outside city limits, but.
Well, we don't need, we don't need speculating about it anyway, we'll find out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it, we'll look into it.
We'll double check.
Because, see why, what the rhyme of reason is for which ones are not.
So, the, okay, this edge of the city limits goes right through the building that they operate in, so they must, they must consider that as the edge, I would guess.
Sure, that would make sense.
Cause I, yeah.
Run it down anyway, uh, it would make sense.
Yeah, so some of it, some of the property would be.
And probably Racers over there in Sector, whatever it is now, over in Sector.
Yeah.
They might not be open anymore, I don't know, but, um, okay, well, we got a motion and a second on the floor to approve liquor license for North Cassous Golf Club, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, nay, motion carries unanimous. Okay, we need to next appoint a township trustee for Cresco Township, looks like Gregory Casey uh, is interested in filling the vacancy for Steve Mallory, who is unable to serve at this time and is retiring. Do we have a motion to approve, approve Greg Casey as the ch- township trustee for Cresco Township? Motion by Garmin.
I'll sign it.
Second by Haas. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, nay, motion carries unanimous. Okay, Roger, we are up to discussion decision animal ordinance.
Has Todd drafted one yet?
What's that?
Excuse me, has Todd drafted an ordinance yet?
I have not seen one.
I saw it was on the agenda, so I thought maybe there was one drafted.
We need to.
Cause if they're.
You don't have much to say, uh, what's that?
We have to, I mean.
We shouldn't have to have a motion, have him drafted, no, I thought, did you? Talk with him after our last meeting?
I saw you guys had it on the agenda, so I just assumed you'd already submitted one.
I have some opinion.
Are you, are you wanting to just exactly copy that one that you showed us, or what, you would have to incorporate it to, you know, obviously he's the attorney, so I'd want him to make sure he looks at it, so he can prosecute.
Don't you think I'm gonna take some input from you?
Collaboration between the two of you. I assumed that that had happened, is why it was on the agenda, I didn't put it on the agenda.
I think it was. Well, we had put it on the agenda a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, and you just won't table it, because he hasn't got nothing back to it yet, and I haven't talked to him yet.
We should have a discussion on what we want in it, you know, based upon the drafts that Roger sent us.
And that was the Hancock County ordinance?
We'll have to give Todd some direction.
A Brammer County ordinance, excuse me.
Is there anything that you didn't like in there?
No, not really, no. There's nothing that.
I think the biggest thing was just updating it so that we agree with Cassous County and, and, because that's the one that incorporated the animal.
All animals.
All animals and.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct, we don't have a so-called dog ordinance for the unincorporated areas, but by calling it animal ordinance, we could also utilize it for the livestock that's, um, open range that gets out quite often, not that we wanna typically enforce it, but we wanna be able to have something that, when you have a consistent problem, you gotta have something to make sure you get the message across, it's gotta be fixed.
Yep.
And the mapping deal is, is not really that I'm concerned that it becomes a law, I just think that's a great idea, and I would think that animal owners would appreciate it because it's a nightmare when dispatch can't find the owners of livestock, or they don't answer their phone, or they don't leave the proper emergency contact, and the longer they're loose, the more liability it is for the animal owner. So, we have a system set up, it's just, what we would like is to have owners that have open range livestock to register with us, so that we can keep that map updated. So if a motorist comes by at two o'clock in the morning and sees cattle on the road, we can quickly bring it up on the map and determine who the possible owner is and contact them, and make sure that they're put back into the, into the pasture. I, I agree with you, I would think they wanna be involved too, but is there any, has there been, would there be any reason of, is there another side to it? I can't imagine what it is, but I, I'm not a livestock owner, so.
Well, I, I can see the, I can see the convenience aspect of it and the, the logic behind that, um, as to how that would be helpful. At the same time, I don't know that, just in the name of freedom and liberty of raising livestock, if you really want the government to have all of your animals GPS tracked, I, I'm just saying, there's gonna be plenty of those people out there too, so.
I mean, I think as long as there's not specific punishments for not registering, it would be more of a voluntary system anyway, and most people would, would be, I mean, you guys already have.
As long as you're not forcing people to be.
I'd say, yeah, I'd say a majority of them that cooperate with us, we have them, and they update us if they change into a different pasture, or, uh, you know, relocate it, but.
I'd say as long as you're not forcing people.
But usually there's someone, I know we've had phone calls before for cattle out that they thought were ours, they weren't, but we help figure out whose they are.
And that's, nice thing is that the livestock owners are usually good luck, and work with each other.
And few enough people have cattle anymore, open range, that you can usually figure out who it is fairly quickly, but yeah.
Alright.
But, yeah, well, let's, um, I guess we'll have to table this, and I'll, I'll talk to Todd, and Roger, could you get with Todd at some point?
Yep.
Please, and, and just to make sure you two are on the same page.
Yeah, I'd prefer to be, I'll sort it up, and then you guys can review it, and I'll look at it, and then we can have discussion about it.
Okay.
But we basically need to have something drafted up, because right now, all we have is what I provided in with a couple other counties that have, so.
Yep, yep. Very good, well, let's, let's go, go forward with that, and we'll table the animal, animal ordinance for today.
And you'll let me know when you want it back, huh?
And, you know, why, why don't we put it on the agenda for two weeks from today? If that's alright.
That'll be February fourth.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and just as a note, we're also going to postpone the Veteran Affairs update.
Till next week.
Till next week, so, yep. Okay. We are up to solar ordinance, discussion decision, solar ordinance. So really, what we need to do here to begin this discussion is, have any of you seen the sample ordinances from other counties? I know Doug had sent them out before you two were on the board, um, if, if you go into your, your, not your packet, but, um, go to board meetings, and go to twenty twenty-four board meetings, and then go to November twenty twenty-four, and I believe it's the twenty-sixth, let me see. Oops. November twenty-four, my thing's not loading here. That might not be it.
So I, I copied the whole folder from there.
Oh, you did.
Three twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four is what it shows for a date modified, but I put that whole folder in my OneDrive.
Okay, okay.
I don't, I don't go back to the.
It used to be.
System for that, but.
Okay, well, either way, we need to get that to, to Howard and Amber, and.
I might have it, mine.
Cause I had, I had gone back and looked at it a couple times, I don't know where it went. Unless you, can you just search in your general search bar too?
So, I just copied the whole folder and put it on my OneDrive, so I have it locally on my OneDrive, rather than on the board meeting folders.
Okay.
But if you, I mean, it shows three twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four is date modified, so I'm guessing it'd be somewhere in that ballpark, probably.
And you're looking for the template, or you're looking for the monitoring?
You're looking.
Looking for other counties' ordinances, um, so I just went into Board of Supervisors, type in the search bar solar, and it'll bring up a folder, it says zoning dash solar. And that will give you about maybe ten other counties in Iowa that currently have solar ordinances in place. I would encourage you to read through those, I mean, you don't have to read through them word, word for word by any means, but just to get an idea of what other counties are doing, um.
Was there one that you guys were looking at in particular?
We had looked at, um, Lynn and Green County as more favored ones off that list, um, so maybe take a look at those two specifically.
Lynn.
We had some differences of opinion on the board as far as how to perceive what we wanted included in it, so that's why it was. so that's why it was, we waited until we had the new board here and, and discussed what we all want to go into things, so.
What were the things of Lynn and Green that stood out, or is that too big of a topic?
Well, and we never got real detailed in discussions at that time, so this is really our main starting point.
Yeah, so we need discussions on it before we have a decision on it.
Correct, we're not gonna decide anything today.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's why it's on the agenda.
And, and kind of what we talked about at that point in time was looking at these other counties' ordinances as examples, and we could, they can choose what we want, what we liked or didn't like out of them, and basically kinda put our own template together of our perspectives, and then, once we had all of our discussions out of the way, we could send it to an attorney, they could put it in legal context, and it would be, it would make it much more efficient if we get all the real discussion of it out of the way before we involve attorney or anyone else, so, kind of, just look at them from the standpoint of the actual even potatoes of, of the.
The attorney needs them or wishes.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we're gonna direct an attorney to put something together, they need to know our preferences of, do you want this number, or that number, or which pieces do you want included? So that's, that's really what the discussion's about at this stage.
And most of that is gonna include what you want for setback distances from different property lines, residences, businesses, whatever. Um, and decommissioning plan is probably gonna be the two main pieces of what the attorney's gonna want to know. I mean, there's a couple other things in there too, fees, permit fees and that kinda stuff, but, um, and there's kind of three ways to go about it. We, we couldn't forego having an ordinance to begin with and just have them get a conditional use permit, like any other industry in the county. Um, but the board just chose to go the ordinance route in making an ordinance. Would, we'd have to define what we want there as we just discussed, and then, or the third is, if we just don't want commercial solar in Cassuth County, there's an option to have a solar ban, which some counties do, it.
What gives you the authority to do that? I, I, I don't know, but what gives you the authority?
The state is, is how, it's, it's much very similar to the wind turbines, the fact that we have a, a wind ordinance, and not all states allow counties to regulate and site and route energy, um, companies like this.
Specific to energy?
Depends on the state, so, like Ohio.
Let's talk about Iowa.
Right.
What does Iowa enable us to do?
Well, and Iowa enables us to draft an ordinance to regulate renewable energy, yeah. There's nothing in the legislature that prevents us at the moment.
And, and you, you want to do this because what happened with wind, or you, you wanna be upfront of it, or, or what?
Trying to be proactive with that, cause I think with, with wind power, I have my own opinions, but, you know, the county got behind the eight ball in some of that.
So, uh, just had, just discussing, I have no, I have no thoughts other than, if I was being approached by somebody that wanted to pay me fifteen hundred an acre for a year to have solar.
Yep.
I wouldn't want five people, uninformed people setting something up, you know, health or health or, and not, not attacking what you said at all, but setbacks and, and whatever the other else you mentioned, decommissioning.
Yep.
I, I'd be concerned about tile, you know, if there, if there are digitalistic tiles going through the properties.
There's another big piece of that, yeah.
But I'm, I'm, I'm no way, shape or form think I can anticipate, I think it takes, and, and that's where you're gonna get it from reading all the other ordinances, I'm sure. But, I, uh.
And, yeah, and that's why this past, a few months ago, I think Kyle and I attended a workshop on solar, um, that was done out to college, we had a, a representative from Iowa State Extension, uh, come up and do a different presentation on solar in Iowa, as an unbiased individual and, and just answering questions and, and going through some of that, um, that was helpful. Um, and then, yeah, I mean, doing your own research is good too, uh, so.
And, and really it comes down to, uh, whether it's your opinions or feedback from constituents or whatever. I mean, we're an agriculture state, and, I mean, we have, we have conversations, and it, I guess it comes up frequently, I mean, even up out at like NACO meetings or National Association, there's, there's places where they're talking about water rights in, out, out in the West in regards to renewables, access to land. I mean, the, the conversation could be whatever you make it to be, or whatever our needs here are locally. Um, I don't know which example or if they're in any here in particular, but there's, I think there's some that limited by, um, CSR. If you have a CSR rating over whatever number you choose, it's not eligible for solar, because you're focused on producing crops and eating the world. So, I mean, whatever pieces of that puzzle.
There you go.
We feel are important, we can, um, have conversations about.
Has there been opposition to, to the talk of an ordinance? I mean, like, the wind, wind towers was, uh, has there been any opposition to any of this, it, previous to now?
I have, nobody's come in the boardroom and opposed.
I'm not sure anybody's aware of it, though.
I don't, I don't think the general public is extremely aware that we're working, I mean, some people are aware, but it's.
So it's not as hot of a topic?
I don't think it will be as hot of a topic as wind, but what I want to avoid, this is my driving factor for wanting to pursue some type of an ordinance, is because wind energy tore apart neighborhoods in this county and a lot of hurt feelings between neighbors, and I don't want just a commercial solar farm to come up and put a forty acres of solar next door to your neighbor and.
Or four hundred.
Or four hundred, or seven hundred, like down by Badger, or whatever, and, um, and we go through that mess again. So, that's what I want to avoid, and I want, I just want us to be proactive in that.
Yep, and, I mean, Howard touched on it already, but I said multiple times, the biggest concern I would have would be our drainage district infrastructure. I mean, if you, if you've got someone who's interested in putting, uh, their farm in solar, for example, and there's a mile of county tile below them and a mile or two above them, everybody still needs access to the systems that they're paying for. And as a byproduct, we need access to do any repairs, maintenance, improvements, whatever, so. And a lot of that is covered under our drainage district crossing policies and procedures. Um, but if we're talking solar, that probably should be explicitly mentioned to make sure that there's no confusion.
Obviously, you're gonna have to define what constitutes a commercial super.
And there, there is a definition of that, I think it is.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna have to incorporate a specific.
Correct, correct, cause it, cause this is not, this has nothing to do with if you want on your property, you know, your home, and you wanna put up solar panels on your hog building, or, or on your house, or, you know, in your yard to be more energy efficient for your home. That's not what this is addressing, this is addressing commercial industry, um, so.
Yeah, this would, this would not affect anything for private, personal use.
Correct, correct.
I understand, but again, one person's, one, one person doesn't like.
You need to define that.
Forty acres, and another person doesn't like his neighbor doing it. If, uh, if on Oc- October third at four o'clock in the afternoon, the glare is bothering them, they're not gonna like it, but it might only be for two hours, once, once, you know, one day a year, so, I'm, you know, I.
Yep.
Again, I, if, if, if I had an eighty that somebody wanted to pay me, I'm very agricultural minded, but if I had, I'm very financial minded too. If I had somebody that wanted to pay me, and I'm hearing stories of fifteen hundred an acre per year.
Yep.
I don't, us getting in the way of that is for, without a very good reason, would, I'd have a problem with that. And I, and I can't, and there might be some very good reasons, I'm not saying there aren't, and tile would be one of them.
I might be less than, but I was looking for wind counties.
You have to click on the folder, I did the same thing.
Zoning dash solar.
The top folder, you have to click on.
Oh, cause I think, cause I didn't click on that, and I did find green, so.
Yeah, mhm. I did the same thing and had to ask Carter.
Okay, gotcha.
And I don't know that any of these are gonna be a, just a copy and paste to Cassuth County, it's just gonna be helpful information to look at. So I think, being that Howard and Amber are new to the discussion, would it be a, a good idea to let you review some of that? And come back in a week or two and have this discussion again?
I'd imagine so.
I would imagine so, I would imagine a week would not be sufficient, I mean, not to, not to be able to kinda research some of those things that are in those ordinances, just to.
Yep, yep.
I mean, are we in a hurry?
So we did the, the moratorium was back in September.
So nine months is gonna take you to June.
Nine months will take us to June. It'd be good to have an idea of where we wanna go within the next couple of months.
Right, but does it give us enough time to do it, publish it, do all of that stuff before that's up?
Depends on how, oh yeah, I mean, we have time to get an ordinance for sure, but depends on how long our discussions and conversations here take, I mean.
Yeah.
If, if we had something that we had agreed on by the end of February, it would be easy, but, I mean, you just have your notice timeframes for everything going through the pub, for the.
Yeah.
The publication side of it.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not drafting it.
We probably would have a different attorney draft.
We would?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because Todd, Todd has already, Todd has already informed the board that he has a conflict, um, on his private side with drafting an ordinance for solar, so.
Okay.
So we would have to seek outside help with that.
Alright.
But, do we need to set an attorney that we're gonna be in contact with for that, or is that something we don't need to set? We, we had, we had previously said we would pursue maybe Ayler's and Cooney to work with for that.
Do we need to make that official?
We don't need that in motion today, I don't think we need that in motion today, but, um. Yeah.
This look, uh, Howard just looks a little bit different than mine does, cause it's. So I, I.
You talking about clicking on the folder?
It's under board meetings, so if you go to board meetings. Go there.
And I was right, it's actually be twenty twenty-three when that got put in the packet.
Okay.
November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, cause if you're gonna go through the county files. I wasn't thinking twenty twenty-four, it was just a couple of months ago.
Oh, go to, what was it, tw- tw- two thousand twenty-five board meetings, where did we find the solar folder?
Three, twenty twenty-three.
I just had you type in solar up in the search bar.
I was there once.
Yeah.
I didn't get this.
Okay, so now, in that search type.
Yeah, I understand, I did the solar ordinance.
I think you're, I think you're where I'm at.
Well, try zoning dash solar.
I think it comes up there.
Mine came up differently too, I didn't have the folder pop up. Oh, you're dragging that around? Go. Okay, so you would be searching under OneDrive right now. You're not here, okay, go to. Oh, you're not, you're not connected.
Okay.
I don't know, hi, just hover your mouse here, oh, hold on. So now you don't have to use the VPN, now you can click on the board.
That's why it's coming up different.
Yeah, board meetings, and then just type up there, zoning dash solar.
Sure.
Yep.
Very official one. Whatever works.
Yeah, that's right, it's straighter than I could drive.
So, the VPN you use when you're not on the county's network, so when you're at home or anywhere else, where's connected to Casey Public instead of Casey's.
He has anything to add for the solar, he can, and then we'll be up to the.
They're not coming, it's, they're asking.
Oh, that's right.
I just, I just changed your network to make it easier.
Alright.
Hey Doug, it's Josh up here, um, so we are doing some discussion on the solar ordinance, and then we'll be up to you right after that as well. So if you wanna come up for the solar. Uh, just briefly, not, not too in-depth, but, yeah, if you wanna come up now, we're, we're discussing it now.
Alright, good.
And did you guys mention that you thought one, one or two of these were particularly good review, or just looking at them all?
I had read through them, out of them, I liked Lynn and Green the best.
Lynn and Green?
Lynn and Green, but that's, I don't know if anybody else read through them or not, and what they liked or not, so. We didn't have too in-depth of discussions at that time.
Doug, it did wanna just sit in on some of this discussion too, so. Okay.
And I've, I've said this in the boardroom before, and just so everyone knows where I'm at here, I mean, I prefer there be no wind turbines in the county, I prefer there be no commercial solar in the county, and I mean, I would be for a ban on solar, and, but I just, that's my stance in renewable energy, that's what makes the world go around, I guess, but, uh, still open for discussion.
Is that what your constituents want?
That's what I hear from constituents. But. I have not had anybody to date reach out to me desiring to have a solar farm, um, but I know there's people that do, so.
Good morning again.
Just so you all know, but, morning Doug.
Good morning.
Um, we just have had a little discussion, and Amber had, and Howard have not been a part of the discussion that, up to this date, really, so, um, introduce them to the folder with the other county ordinances in Iowa, um, and just had a little discussion, that, anything you wanted to add for, for their information's sake, I was.
No.
Okay.
I think the two that we're kinda looking at is Lynn and Green County, um.
Lynn and.
Lynn and Green Counties.
Did we ever get a report back from the guy from Iowa State? Thought he'd said that was.
I have not received. Yeah, I was wondering that too, yeah, yeah.
Do you have any idea, Doug, uh, with windmills, you know, they're, they're weight small, and they're bigger, have they have to modify the roads? With solar, is it all the smaller scale stuff, there would be nothing like that that would impact? Or you have no idea?
My, my, there would still be some sort of substation, um, which they, they need to construct to gather the electricity and then put it on the grid. So that is gonna take some heavy load, but it's nothing else compared to, uh, wind energy.
And we don't, we don't have anything regulating substation construction now.
Substruct, substations are, uh, they are regulated in our current ordinance. That is a allowable use and, and, uh, essential use in all. That is a allowable use and, and, uh, essential use in all of the areas. I believe A for sure.
Does, do you have the, is it, was it Luke? Is that his name from Iowa State?
Yes.
Do you have his contact information, or maybe reach out and see if, if he's come up with anything yet? But, yeah, otherwise, anything else you guys wanna pursue on this topic?
No, I just think we need to, you know, read up on some of these different ones and
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
do a little bit of research on some of the things that, um.
How much time would you like before we put it on the agenda again?
Doesn't matter, maybe a week or two.
I'd say two.
Let's go two weeks, so put that on the fourth's agenda as well, we'll, we'll put the animal and, animal ordinance and the solar ordinance again on February fourth's agenda.
Hopefully, we have, uh, this communication started on the other one before, we have it on the agenda again.
Yeah.
Would it be on the, the, the agenda for discussion or decision?
Well, it'd be, be more of a discussion, I don't know what we would decide on that day.
You just want.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we just have it as discussion?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to make a decision just 'cause that's listed, but.
We'll postpone that to the fourth of February. Okay.
But if anybody would be wanting to come and listen, if they know we're making a deci- they think we're making a decision.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it's a long time of here discussing.
Maybe.
If they have some.
Well, there is in that whole process, the ordinance process, there is a public area that's not wired, so, after notice, so.
You get, I, I appreciate that, you, you get eighty percent of the way down the road, and when somebody has an objection, you don't like to turn around, you know, you, and, and I know they won't, people don't tend to come in until it's half boiled or all the way to boiling, so I, I.
But the whole process, there is, you know, after, after it is done.
Yeah, but.
There's a chance.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, and, well, we'll move on then, Wellmark is not coming today. You all saw the email for that?
I did not, but I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, Michelle did not, was not able to get information.
So just, I, again, not to be, not to be a pain in the butt, but I assume that email came either late last night or early this morning, or?
Six thirty-six this morning.
I.
Well, that was from you, I'm sorry. I didn't see it.
Yeah.
That's fine, I, I, I'm not gonna see things that come up.
That's alright. Sometimes I don't see them either, so it's okay.
Okay.
Yep, um, do we know when she is planning or wanting to come up, or?
I can certainly get in touch with her today, would you like her to come up next week?
That would be wonderful if she could.
What specifically does the board want from Wellmark?
Well, I think the last time she was here, we had asked for some additional options for, um, the deductible, the, um.
She had several comparisons, she took notes of for what she was gonna request, I would, I think those had already been requested by now.
Yeah.
So, I mean, she should have all of that.
Well, there, you know, I mean, we, we can be flooded with information, but I think you gotta have some specifics in order to really, if you really wanna start discussing things, I mean, you can talk in generalities.
And get nowhere, I, I agree.
Get too much information, and then we don't know which way to go, I, um, I think she had stated that even if we go with the, the, um, I don't know if I can correct the terms, but the more, well, or the, if we did like a family and a the, uh, parent and child, or the four, the four different things, it wouldn't change our, really, our price any, it would, it's just putting it in different pockets. But, um, it might change different departments, maybe what they, what they contribute, but at the end of the day, it's still the same? That's what I got out of that?
Yeah, so. Yeah, I mean, basically what she said was, the overall and the total would all still be the same, it just gets distributed differently between the groups, so yeah, I mean, that's the short summary of it.
So, and then the, this high deductible, the, the, what, um, it, it was, tell me a little bit more about that, I mean, I was here and I listened, but the high deductible, what's our benefit of that? It's going to lower premiums, or what?
So the, the premiums from that are lower, um, or they were last year when we got prices, um.
Did we raise the deductible last year?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not, okay.
Yep.
So what, can I ask now, what is our deductible at this time?
Thousand and two thousand.
A thousand and two thousand, and with a high deductible, I mean, what kind, what are we talking about? Don't we have to give them some direction of what we wanna see?
Well, that's, that's one of the things we talked about last week of what that actual minimum figure is, and what's federally required to qualify for a high deductible plan. Because a high deductible plan opens up the option for using an HSA, whether it's employee or employer funded or a combination of both, that option gets opened up, so you can't use that unless you have a high deductible plan.
Right, right.
That qualifies, she was gonna get the numbers for what that figure was, but.
Yeah, because I've been kinda looking into the HSA, and there's, you know, there's definitely pros and cons of, of that. So, you know, and the cons definitely affect the employees, um, greatly, so, you know, I'm not certain that, well, I'm just gonna say it, I'm not certain that I would necessarily be in favor of that, but.
Without making this personal toward Michelle, who, if I don't know enough well, not to be personal, we, we didn't even agree on what those minimums were, as Kyle was alluding to.
Right.
And my limited experience, it, it's gotta be good for everybody, if, if somebody goes, you're gonna, I, I would think you'd still be offering both. You, you, you're, you're gonna, and, and the goal is to save money, there's no doubt about, and to do that, uh, you, you may, you know, you're gonna say, you have choice A or choice B, and choice A might get more expensive, and choice B might be cheaper, you're trying to save money, there, there, there's no reason anybody would do it if it wasn't to save money. So, last year, if you, and I'm not second guessing anything, but if you just said, uh, high deductible plan, uh, and I'm making up with, you know, you, you're not gonna have a two hundred and fifty dollar participation, but you're gonna have this, and then, and then if the county side of it would've saved four hundred dollars on the premium, that's why you offer it, that's why, and some people, it's gonna be attractive to, other people, it's not. Now, how that correlates with, they've gotta have so much to cover the bill, I don't know, you know, the, when they talked about modifying from employee, employee family, it wasn't gonna do any good to go to employee spouse, employee children, employee spouse and children, so I don't know, and Doug, I agree with you a hundred percent, if, if we don't narrow down what we wanna do, we'll, we'll pass this back and forth for two months and do nothing against.
Too much.
And we don't know what we wanna do, but what we want is, you know, how are these constructed to incentivize people to go to a high deductible plan that will ultimately save the county money? I mean, is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you don't, you, you.
Go ahead.
We, we had a meeting, I think it was in July of this year, and Michelle came up, and you, you've got to have training, you've got, somebody's gonna have to do some training, which Michelle said she would. And people are gonna have to have a general a general presentation of how high deductible works, and then they're gonna have to get a specific, how is this gonna work for me? And Michelle from Wellmark said that they could take care of that. But after that, then, there's gonna have to be work from somebody in Cassuth County staff. Um, somebody's gonna have to be able to answer questions, somebody's gonna have to be, uh, be a supporter of it, and have, be able to express how good it's been for them. Um, we, we don't have that person on staff right now.
Doug, can you remind me what the minimum number is that we'd have to have for a high deductible plan?
Michelle was going to bring that along.
Cause there is a minimum number, correct?
There is a minimum deductible amount.
Oh, I'm, no, I mean, a minimum number of participants.
I think it's ten percent.
Okay.
Thank you, right?
Yeah, it was, it was either ten or ten percent, which for our numbers is.
About the same.
About the same, okay.
Close, I mean, yeah, it's, it's.
So, so if we don't get ten people interested, then it's a mute, mute point, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So is it, is it just because of timelines and such, and, I mean, I know we have to have a number in the budget, and I know we kinda talked about that last week for timeline, I mean, is this something that feasibly can even be done before July first? Or is this something we want to educate employees on prior to? I mean, like, and have it be, okay, here's the direction we're thinking about going? Um, educate them a couple of different times, and have it be more of a, this is the direction we're think we're going, this is what the county could save, um.
You don't wanna rush employees making that decision either, cause it's a big decision.
It is, and I worry about that being, you know, it's almost February. I worry about that being a very quick thing, I'm, I'm, I'd like to save money, I'd like to save the county money, but I'm also looking at, you know, last year, they felt rushed, and um, it kinda brought the morale down quite a bit from everything that I've heard, so do we really wanna rush into that?
Well, I think that's one of the pieces that was discussed last year, but I don't know that everyone fully grasped the, the ability that we can have a special open enrollment for this, it doesn't have to be something that people switch at the end of June. We could have an open enrollment out in November that would be effective for the following January and the following calendar year, and the, the timeline is always gonna be the same timeline, we, we've never gotten quotes from Wellmark before January, so I mean, we're talking the middle, even say the end of January now, you're not gonna get it any faster than that.
Well, we wouldn't have rates, but like, we, we've, we already know that, like, this year it went up, and we can, you know, say, hey, with this trend, you know, we are seeing a rise, and, um, we have to keep in mind our taxpayers and our employees, and here is, um, a direction we're thinking about going, and educate them, that gives them time to look into an HSA and how it affects them, and I, I know age definitely affects the different HSA, but like you say, it's a choice, but I, I just really feel like I feel like it's a push, I don't think it will be well received if we don't do education first.
And I agree with that to the standpoint of, if you do it now with education as the primary focus, it doesn't have to be something that people rush into. If, if we were, if we were offering the same plan we currently have and this as an option, it's not a force, it's, it's an either or. But if we were looking at completely switching to a high deductible plan as our only option, that would be more of a force, and I'm, I've never suggested or recommended that. If that's something that we transition to in two years or five years or whatever, that's something else that could be discussed, but if we start as offering two plans, it gives the employee choice, and I think that's always a benefit, if it's at or below our current cost right now, I don't know why you wouldn't offer the choice. And it would give ample time for research, I mean, if we talk, say we have any sort of a decision before, even the end of March, you would have six to nine months to make a decision, like, that's, that should be sufficient time for education and, um, asking any of the relevant questions that may be asked on an individual or group basis.
So when you say the six to nine months, how are you coming up with the six to nine months?
If, if we had a, if we had a decision by March, then you would have time between March and a special open enrollment, which I would anticipate would be in November or early December, which would then be effective in January twenty twenty-six, so you would have all summer. Spring, summer, and beginning of fall.
So a special open enrollment, we'd, I mean, can you not correlate it with our normal enro- open enrollment?
It, it could be an option for both, but a special open enrollment would give people an additional time to choose, like, you have your individual special events, whether it be marriage or any of those other things that qualify you to change your plan in the middle or outside of open enrollment. This would be something where we could offer a special open enrollment because of a new plan option, and then you can correlate that with a different time on the calendar to give people more time to do that research, so I don't think our timeline as far as education is ever gonna really change, um. But if we, if we do a special open enrollment in November or December, you would have plenty of time in between to do that education and training, and, and it would, it would be entirely voluntary, it would be the employee's choice of, um, which package best, best fits their needs.
The, it seems, and you, I'm very willing to be corrected, but it seems that we, that you crossed a bridge last year when you asked the employees to contribute two hundred and fifty dollars a month, and that was something new and different. The, if, if healthcare costs slash insurance continue to go up ten to fifteen percent, and general inflation is some five percent, you're, you're not gonna get, the day is gonna come where that two hundred and fifty is gonna increase. So something's gonna have to change, the, the, it, it just will have to change, and of course, people have been talking about this for thirty years, you know, like, uh, healthcare inflation has been higher than, than general inflation, but county employees all over the world, all over the country, all over the state are making this decision. Internal revenue is put in provisions for HSAs, county employees are perfectly capable of understanding this, and I agree, it takes education, but certainly, we have somebody that can provide the education, and/or they can call Wellmark and get the education. I don't care if we do it in the next three months, the next six months, the next nine months, but I believe you, you better be exploring options that are gonna uh, get these things under control, and I don't know this to be true, but I would think a younger person, it might even be attract, well, an employee who's getting it free right now is, is not, a single person is not gonna switch to anything, you, if you don't incentivize people toward this, and I'm not saying shove it down their throat, but changes are coming, you know, in the future, you, you just can't, you can't have a program that costs, forgive me, in the middle of twenty thousand dollars a year for an employee that goes up ten to fifty, eh, ten to fifteen percent, I believe that's the number that's been thrown around, that it's gonna go up, and do that year after year and not change something, and, and, and think that it's perfectly normal for that to be included in your pay, when that's not what's happening in the rest of the world. That's my opinion.
Well, there are consultants, and there are governments, taxing entities that use consultants to administer those types of things as well, and that was discussed, and. And that was discussed and it was chosen not to do that. So that, that is another
As far as education, as far as education.
But those consultants, they answer everything. They, the government entities, when somebody asks a question about healthcare, health insurance, well, you need to talk to these people here. So, I mean, that's another option as well, but what in, in my own mind, what needs to be done is there's a high deductible dollar amount. Say it's ten thousand dollars, just for sake of, let's say twelve thousand dollars. Okay. I'm looking at that as an employee. And I find that attractive enough. But what is the time length that I'm gonna go in order to get my HSA up to twelve thousand dollars? It's not gonna be three years. I don't know if it's gonna be two years. Somewhere, I gotta be able to do that. And my understanding of them, the employer contribution helps make that decision. And what is the, that's the other one. What, is the employer gonna contribute at all?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Or is it, you know, is it gonna be up to a certain amount?
Right.
But somewhere, you're, as an individual, I am starting to take some of that risk.
Right.
And I need to be able to save up in order to be able to pay for that risk. And that's, that's another, that's a whole nother topic. But I think it's something that needs to be cited.
Absolutely, it's a total package. But you can't have an HSA before you have the program. I mean, it's not like, you know, you're, you're gonna start building a fund before you have the HSA. And, and my personal experience, which is very limited, you know, to, to my family is, here's the option, you know, your, your insurance is gonna cost this much if you go this way, go this way. It's gonna cost this much if you go this way. And if you go this route, and, and if you're unlucky, you're right. You know, if you, if you have a health problem, you're gonna have to come up with the, whatever the, the deductible then is or maximum out of pocket, which might be, the maximum out of pocket right now for families, three thousand dollars, I believe, or, or is that the deductible?
Oh, that's max.
Okay, the deductible's two thousand, the max out of pocket's three. Not a lot of difference there. The ma, if you go, I'm making the numbers up. But if you go to a high deductible plan, maybe your max out of pocket is seven thousand. But instead of it costing, this is totally hypothetical, instead of it costing you four hundred dollars a month for your family, now it's costing you two hundred dollars a month for your family. And we will put a thousand dollars a year into your high deductible health savings account. And, and you should probably put some in too. You know, some of the savings you have in the premium. And if, you're right, it takes an education, you're right, it's a package deal. But you, you're not gonna set this, I don't think, I don't know, but you're not gonna set this up with, okay, here you are, Mary employee or Mary and Joe employee, and we're gonna put six thousand dollars into your health deductible savings account. That's, I don't believe that's the way it works or can work legally. I think you gotta have the plan before you contribute to it. The, the recognition, and, and this is part of it too, the recognition is there was a shock to the system last year, even though there was employees that said they'd been anticipating it for, I heard somebody say up to ten years, they've been anticipating a change. And it was, it hurt because there was no pay raise last year. That did, they, they had to do them both in the same year, okay? Things are gonna, you need to recognize that things, I believe, I believe. My thought is that things are gonna change again. The day is gonna come where the, where the, the board or the taxpayers are gonna say, you know, you're not that selective group of employees. We're not gonna, you're not gonna make X plus have health insurance that is, that is, uh, better than what ninety percent of people in the general public give. It, it's not here today, obviously, but the day will come because of the divergence between general inflation and healthcare inflation. It, it'll happen, like it did last year. Might not happen for ten years, but it'll happen.
And, and I guess here, even, even recently, um, I was made aware of the individual family, that changed employers went to a high deductible health plan. And there was also, well, the, the wife's employer didn't offer this, but the husband's employer did, that there's kind of a, and I don't, don't know the exact term, but there's kind of an indemnity plan. If you use the high deductible health, healthcare plan, and if, like, if you do X, Y, Z, it pays so much of a benefit, kind of insurance on insurance. And there's obviously a monthly premium for that. But, and, and it's, say it's a couple hundred bucks if you go get a physical or a wellness exam. And if you have a broken leg, it pays how much money? Or you have cancer, it pays whatever, you're in a car accident, pays whatever. Well, those things, as the user or the employee, yes, you're paying your, up to your high deductible dollars. But then for them, on the backside, this indemnity plan is paying them for each box that they check, each category that's used. And that wasn't something I was aware of last year. But I think there are a lot of options when you open up that as a piece of the equation. So I would encourage everyone to look at options and do research, but I think it is a valuable tool that could be beneficial for some employees. Obviously, it has to fit your situation. And some are gonna be in a better situation with the current plan we have, and some could be in a better situation with another option on the table. But I don't think it hurts anyone. If Josh wants to choose a different plan than me, it doesn't hurt me if he chooses something else. We're in the pool together, Walmart still figures our rates as a group. And they talked about last year that the, the plan that has more population or more contracts, they correlate the numbers back and forth, and they talked about how they do their calculations with that. But at the end of the day, if we have twenty on one and the rest on the other or vice versa, it's not a negative impact to the other employee that's side by side. I just think it's another, it's another option and it's good to have more tools in the toolbox, so.
Yep.
That doesn't help you, it's the wrong direction together. But again, last week, we couldn't even, there wasn't even a consensus on what the, what the minimum level was. So maybe we've gotta say, you know, we wanna, we want comparisons on, but we don't even know what to choose from. They, they offer certain plans, I'm sure we'd have to choose from. I, I don't, I, again, I'm not in any particular hurry to do something or anything, but I, I think, I think if you start offering it in twenty twenty six and, and show them what there is for them, at least you give them choices. And, and, and I misrepeat what Kyle said, I guess, like, I don't know. If nobody wants to do it, that, that, that's fine.
I believe, no, I, I agree with you, Howard. Uh, but I believe with last year, the high deductible minimum was thirty-two hundred, something?
She was wrong, she was, she was wrong.
And, and that, and that's what, I think, whether it's I or we or whatever, I think that's what I said last week, was find out what that figure is and get us
We did, yeah.
the lowest option for a high deductible plan that would qualify. So whatever that dollar figure is, in comparison with our other stuff, that's what I would expect her to bring, I guess, for a high deductible option. But she also talked about, um, and I'm not saying I'm recommending this under any circumstances, but she talked about a comparison of their standard book of business for copays, deductibles, all of those categories, for the, a similar group that we're in and kind of showing their benchmark. And not, again, not that we would take that, but I think it's, it's information I wouldn't be opposed to seeing just so we know how we compare to their standard. We talked about the stop loss last year and changed that, but, and that was to match their standard book of business for groups our size. But it's, I guess
That is a good point. I don't, I don't completely understand the stop loss thing and how, and how it would apply to a high deductible plan. I don't, I don't even understand how it applies to the current plan, but
I think the simplest way to explain the stop loss is
We pay the first seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, we pay the first seventy-five, so then our premiums go down. It's no different than a five hundred dollar deductible on your car versus a five thousand dollar deductible. They, they know that their risk is, or they assume that their risk is less because we're paying more of the front end. So our, our contract fees for stop loss went down significantly last year because we started paying more of the front end. And then how that washes depends on actuals. If everybody on our plan spends seventy-five thousand dollars, then it wouldn't be very pretty. If one person spends over seventy-five thousand and everybody else is five hundred, then it would look pretty nice.
Sure.
So it's all based on actuals and
So what, uh, so I guess, yeah, again, back to direction, what are we, what are we thinking for today's purposes?
Well, we had given her a list, and I remember her writing down, you know, a lot of these things that we're talking about today. And she said she was gonna get back to us, and I think we just need to give her till next week to get back to us with those, those items.
Yeah, I would assume she already has a list and has already ordered them, would be my assumption. Because that's what she said she would order on that day.
Yep, well, then let's wait here for her then and discuss that further next week.
Do we have an agenda next week then?
Yes, why don't we put it out on the agenda for next week then?
What time would you like Michelle to be here?
I don't know what our
How far does she drive?
We have anything scheduled as far as hearing her say?
Give her a little time.
Give her a lot of time.
Give her till eleven o'clock.
I mean, ten thirty works.
Yeah. I just didn't know if we had other things scheduled.
Right, don't put her on the, please don't put her on the agenda for
No, that's, that's a dream.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd be fine, yeah, I'd be fine anytime, ten to eleven, whatever.
Let's, let's do ten o'clock, if that works.
Give her, give her, give her
Oh, ten thirty, oh, sorry.
Give her at least thirty, what's, she wants.
Ten thirty works, that's good.
I will talk with Michelle and if, if a little bit earlier, I'll see what the agenda is, what timing, we'll work on that.
And, and I would say we probably don't need to have a time specifically listed on that item, but if we know that she's aiming for ten thirty, we can still have that be the time. I just don't wanna sit here for an hour because we end up early and have a time listed, so. That, that'd be fine.
Okay, well, let's, let's move forward to, uh, good discussion. Let's move forward to construction in the right of way then, Doug.
There is no construction in the right of way.
And then we'll go, go ahead with discussion.
Um, I'm gonna be putting out an advertisement for an employee at the transfer station.
That's, cuz that employee went to a shop, right?
Correct, yeah, transferred to a shop. Um, we're interviewing for Laverne yet and, um, working on budgets. Working on, got some zoning things taken last week, some applications in, so working on that as well.
Without, without, I don't, I don't even know what they are. What do they, what do people have to apply for, for something in this county?
Variances. Well, in agricultural areas, the minimum area of a, uh, parcel is five acres. And this particular person would like a variance to the ordinance, uh, for buildings. We also have a subdivision where the attorney I had, I needed to visit with him, I talked with, called, he's called me, I called him. But we have a subdivision coming up.
So do we have a planning and zoning site upon, upon the, the people to look and see where, when they do have to apply for? I'm trying to shade myself, not anybody.
We do not, we have a very good one right now.
Okay, so is there, is there a paper copy of when you need to?
Oh, yeah, there's applications, we can email them out. There's ordinance, we have the ordinances that can be, that is available on, on website.
I'm aware of the five acre thing for residents and you say you can get a variance. If I wasn't aware of that, how would I, how would I find that out? I just have to ask.
A lot of times when people go get a surveyor, surveyors know it. There's setback variances, uh, if a person wants to build a new, a new building and they're not able to, uh, they're not able to meet setback distances requirements, so get a variance, so.
Anything else for Doug? Today, all right, thanks, Doug.
Very good.
Thanks, Doug.
Have a good day.
Yeah.
All right, we're up to drainage. And Martin's on her way.
Yes.
Okay.
No repair requests this week.
No repair requests?
Everything's too frozen.
Everyone's seen the, everyone's seen the drainage transfers?
Yeah, is there something, I mean, are we supposed to, at least be, uh, smart enough or educated enough to know whether drainage transfer makes sense?
Maybe just explain the process?
Sure.
I would appreciate that as well.
The point, do you want to explain the process of drainage transfers?
Okay, um, yes, as the money is assessed for the different drains, most of the time the transfers are related to an improvement that happened. And the original project is in a main drain. And then the transfers, our, as the money comes in, it goes back to pay for the, the main drain has all the outstanding, excuse me, outstanding warrants.
So why do we, why would we not, why would we not approve a drainage?
You're, you're technically not approving them, you're acknowledging them.
We're just acknowledging that we saw them.
The auditor, auditing firm, um, wants the board to acknowledge them so that they see the transfers that are going through, so that they know what's happening with those.
So it's kinda like one account's kind of the holding all of the scant warrants? And then this is money that came in, so you're transferring to pay some of those?
Yes.
Is that basically what's happening?
Yes, the, another, the improvement created these new schedules with where the work was done. So the money is collected on the new laterals or whatever is listed. And then it goes back to the original drain that started the project.
And, and I like the extra information here. I think to add on to what we have here, though, I think it's important that we see, um, how much is waived and how much is, um, outstanding to really correlate these in our head. Um, and we talked about that a lot at the assessment.
I tried to kind of give you a gist of what was assessed this year.
Yep.
And then the rest are waivers that are ongoing.
But I think correlating, um, well, there's dollars for what was assessed and then you can kinda see what came in and, like, Drain Twenty Main Four has forty-nine thousand that was assessed and forty-nine thousand dollars, seventy-one cents, or seventy-one dollars, sorry, four thousand nine hundred and seventy-one and sixty-five cents this came in, which
What are you looking at? Do we have that too?
Yeah, I'm looking at the twenty twenty-four assessment and what's the full name of it?
Assessments and Waivers.
Assessments and Waivers.
Oh, this, okay, so the second thing, yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah, forty-nine thousand, zero, seven, one, sixty-five cents. So that actually has seventy-one dollars more than assessed, which is fine, great. Okay, yeah, forty-nine thousand zero seven one sixty-five cents, so that actually has seventy-one dollars more than assessed, which is fine, great, whatever. But, um, if there was any waivers or any outstanding, those are really the numbers we need to correlate and make sure they're still in line. Um, even after money comes in, so I think that if we could add.
Yeah, remember though, that, that list is just transfers. That is just showing you what was transferred from one to another.
Right.
Transfers.
Yep, and, and like I said.
So if you want something else that has that information on it.
That's, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we could, we could look at transfers all day long, but maybe to the question that Howard hasn't asked, I mean, what are you gonna see here? The answer is, you're not gonna see a lot until you have a correlation of what's outstanding and what's waived. And, and making sure, say there's a hundred thousand outstanding, if there's a hundred thousand that's waived, then it'll take care of itself. If there's a hundred thousand outstanding and there's fifty thousand that's waived and nothing was assessed, then we're fifty thousand short. And those two numbers being compared is what we really need to see. And keeping track of the transfers and seeing how that actually materializes is definitely good and it's valuable information, but we need to see the. Waived versus outstanding alongside this, in my opinion.
I didn't, I follow the whole conversation, but, but I, I'm, my statement's gonna be similar to what I said earlier today in a different thing. I don't wanna find out that there's a problem. I want you guys, I want you and Tammy to tell me there's a problem, come in here and explain it and then we'll discuss it. I don't wanna look through a list of transfers and or this paid in and this is outstanding and this is waived. I mean, maybe it's my responsibility, tell me if it is, but, but I want you to shout it from the mount high long before it gets to that point.
And that's a fair point. To some degree, as trustees, it is our responsibility.
I like the mindset, yeah.
And, I mean, and I, everything I said was fast and it was assuming that you know what those terms mean, so. I know there's a lot more knowledge behind what I said there, but, I mean.
You're right.
Through all, through all the conversations we had last year, it's the boiling it down to the nuts and bolts. We need to know what is an expense for each drain and what's an income for each drain and they need to balance or we need to make them balance. And that's really bare minimum, two sentence version, that's what it comes down to. And like I said, while this is, and this is all new process, but I'm not criticizing anything that way. While we have this in front of us, we don't have a full picture until we have those pieces together.
Okay, so the sheet that you are looking at now that I pulled up, this is a new process.
The board hasn't seen this before, really, until the last year.
Okay, so that's why I was trying to figure out, um, you know, what information you were kinda looking for in this and what goes into. Like, is this everything? Is this only a month's work?
This. Is this what?
This is the transfers that were just done this month.
This is only, only act.
This is only what we did this last transfer. That's all this is.
Well, it would, no, the worksheet, yeah, the worksheet has some history on there, but it's, it's only actual transfers.
But the work, the worksheet has all the.
Right.
So if there's, if there's nothing happening, it's not gonna show here. So that would make, it's, this is only actuals.
Yes. Right, right, yes.
Um, if you have a checking account that's inactive and you have a thousand dollars sitting there and you don't spend any and you don't bring any in, then it doesn't show here, basically.
Is this something we get, we're going to get once a month?
Whenever there's a transfer.
Whenever there's any transfers.
Drainage transfers.
Oh yeah, drainage transfers.
Yep.
So.
Like I said, I mean, it, it goes back to ten, eleven of twenty-twenty-four and that's really when they kinda, we, we started getting the updates and. Like I said, I appreciate all that, but I do think we need to see the outstanding balances and the outstanding waivers correlated with each of these. So that we can see the full picture.
So we can differentiate that.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we have a hundred thousand outstanding and there's a hundred and fifty that's on waivers, well, there shouldn't be a positive fifty when we get done. That, that type of correlation, we need to be able to do with everything that's got an outstanding balance. And if it's got an outstanding balance, that's not covered by waivers, we need to do an assessment. Um, and we did a lot of that this last year, so we should be on track in general, fairly confident of that, but. That correlation is what we need to see. So, and, and it's, to some degree, it's pretty simple when you boil it down to the nuts and bolts, but you gotta understand the nuts and bolts to get it to that point. Howard, do you have all those signed?
I think so.
Okay, we can just pass them back.
That's fine, man, we'll, we'll get it there.
Okay.
I'm sure I have all signs.
Okay, yep. I just like.
So this kind of spreadsheet, this is a spreadsheet you did yourself, Marge?
Yep.
So it can be modified to fit a different. Just so it's clear, very clear.
But just remember though.
But it's just when there's transfers.
Right, exactly, that, it, yeah, so you'll have. You're, you're not, you're not gonna know what's outstanding or if it's been paid if there's been no transfers, so that's not gonna help you in that circumstance.
So. Well. It won't for everything and this is more of a.
I mean, I'm just thinking that if you got something you want, you need to do it different than just transfers. You need to have something completely separate.
Different.
I agree, I agree, that's.
Cause that's not gonna give you a consistent.
So transfers is.
For, for assessments, it's not at all.
Yes, right.
When we're talking transfers, that's just a snapshot in time. So, I mean, this is, this is showing us what's happened in the last couple of months, so.
Month, just last transfer.
No, this goes back to ten, eleven, twenty-twenty-four, so we got a summary.
No, I'm talking transfers.
Right, but we've got.
She's talking the other page.
Yes.
Which of?
The work.
There was another page that just listed the transfers.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm talking, yeah.
Right. But if, if you look at this as a snapshot in time, yes, it's a snapshot time and yes, it's only the ones that have transfers. When we get to our next assessment time, we'll need the same information and that's what we talked about before.
But we can edit for every different style.
Yeah, right, that will be, that'll be a completely different spreadsheet. We have a completely different spreadsheet for that.
And, and I'm well aware of that, I'm just saying, if, if we're looking at it, it. It really does limited good to see transfers versus what was assessed. I mean, you can kinda see what was coming in. But if you don't see what was waived with that and what's outstanding, it, it, you can't put the puzzle together when you don't have all the pieces. That's what I'm saying, there's.
And that's fine, I completely understand that, but I don't want you thinking that that's gonna give you a full picture because you're only gonna see it when there's transfers coming in.
I understand that.
If you want something else that's gonna give you that consistent, then you need to let us know that so we can do that on a consistent basis.
Yeah, and.
I think that would be actually very good to have as a consistent basis, I really do, because then if we're, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but if we, if, if we are keeping that up. Then we're always aware of where we're at with the drains and where our balances are, so I think it would make the assessment process much easier, would it not?
Yeah.
It should, and, and the caveat with this is if you also compare those.
So we're gonna, Marge and I will work on this and try, we have a spreadsheet for assessment, so what we're gonna try to do is keep that. Updated, you know, regularly and then once a month try to send it out to you in your packets, kind of like we did with the budget worksheets. Um, it's gonna take a little bit extra time, so give us some time to play with it, but we will try to do that, cause I think that'll be a lot more consistent than just looking at. Whatever's transferred, because that's a small picture or check.
And it just confuses it a little bit, to me.
Yeah, but yeah.
The, the, the point of, if you have it with the transfers is, to me, seeing it as it's happening, which is what the transfers are showing. Is as it's happening, this is where it's going, but the, the real. Significant piece of it is when we do assessments and if we have anything that's got a deficiency at assessment time of what's outstanding versus what's coming in for waivers. We should be doing an assessment then and we're, we're not going to change our assessment schedule in the middle of January for the fun of it, so.
So you're saying.
Having, having it on here shows where we're at based on last year's decisions or based on the previous assessment's decisions. So if there's something that doesn't need an assessment, we probably don't really need to look at it.
Well, so drainage transfers don't happen very often, once every few months, so.
And that's okay.
So, um, and we can add it to that, I'm not saying we can't, we absolutely can add it to that, I'm just saying if you want a consistent picture. And I, we don't have to, I'm not saying we have to, but my point is, is you're only gonna get that information when we do drainage transfers, which is only a few times a year, actually.
Right, and, and to be honest, that's, and if you would like it every month, that's fine.
So.
I don't know if there's a big need for it every month. If, if things are set up where everything's taking care of itself, for lack of a better term. If the dollars in, dollars out all match at assessment time or we add an assessment, whatever, it should all shake out in the wash. If we see three transfers between fall taxes going out and the middle to end of January and then nothing else happens the rest of the year. Why do we need to look at it twelve times a year if there's only three pieces of information? I mean, I don't, I don't wanna make more work than is necessary and I don't, I don't really think we need to see it, um, twelve times a year. Just for the fact of having it on a monthly rotation. I'm not opposed to that, but I don't think it's necessary if, if the numbers are the same at the beginning of February as they are at the beginning of March. And then we get some more taxes in and, and they change in April, then I would just look at it when they actually change.
Howard and Amber, would it be beneficial for you guys to see that monthly as you guys are just stepping into this or is that too much information?
Uh, my quick answer to that is I think we're bordering on too much, but, uh, let's back up three steps. These transfers are money that's come in, is it now in some general fund and, and you're allocating, that's not what's happening. What is a drainage, what is a drainage transfer?
No, no. So.
Uh, I'll, I'll.
Okay, so it, Marge can probably explain it better, but it comes into the funds where it's taxed and, but it's assessed out of, and correct me if I'm wrong. Assessed out of a main fund, so it has to be transferred from that, where it comes into, into where it's assessed from.
The particular drainage district.
Yes.
Okay, how many, how many drainage districts are there that we, our trustees have?
Well, the fund, the number of funds.
A hundred.
Yeah.
There's an, there's an answer to the question.
The number of the funds is approximately seven hundred and forty-five funds.
Different funds.
Yes.
Okay, and I don't wanna look through seven hundred and forty-five funds.
No, and we, they're not all active.
It's just if there's.
My next question, what percentage of those seven hundred and forty-five?
If there's an ongoing project.
Right, or not, the project is done, but now you're facing.
Yeah.
Waivers, yeah.
So, so probably to really understand it, you need to really go back to the beginning of the bill. I mean, you got Tyler sitting in the back of the room as an engineer, you got, say you got a drainage repair request that comes in and. We see, okay, this is a small hole in a field, a contractor can fix it for a thousand bucks and you go on, okay, simple. Say the repair request is, hey, it's a massive undertaking, then you engage an engineer or you got a petition for an improvement and you get engaged an engineer. Either way, at some point in time, you start paying bills, you're spending money. So, once those bills are paid, which we do the first Tuesday of every month, once those bills are paid, they're issued and stamped warrants. If the drain does not have the cash to pay it immediately. Those warrants start accruing interest from the day they are issued and approved. So what we have to look at is a culmination of engineering bills, publication, attorney fees, if there's anything. Contractors, all of those total up to an outstanding balance that the drain owes. Then we do assessments in the spring, typically that May timeframe. Um, those assessments are what you would see as a landowner coming as drainage tax that's due. So the funds and all those different project codes and all that, it, to some degree is kinda in the background because that's how everything's tracked and all that. But the nuts and bolts of it is the expenses that are incurred eventually add up to an outstanding balance and we have to send an assessment. So the landowners have the ability to pay it. Otherwise, it's an outstanding balance and they hypothetically may never know about it. Once it's assessed, they have the ability to pay it all immediately or they could spread it over ten or twenty years if we allow waivers. So that's where it gets into the warrants, outstanding warrants versus waivers and all those pieces of the puzzle. Because they work in conjunction from the basics and the mechanics of when the money is spent. And when it's assessed, so that that's when it's supposed to be coming in, due and payable.
Alright.
That paint the picture a little bit.
It's all there. If you got more questions, go down to the auditor's office and Marge will show you all the funds and, and. And get your questions answered there too.
Well, and I think there's a way to accomplish what they were talking about without us having information overload. It's just maintaining some kind of a spreadsheet with that information and when she does transfers, okay, here is the spreadsheet. Here is a snapshot of those changes because of these transfers. It can be accomplished without it being, but I think it is good to keep what you were talking about, a spreadsheet like that and that does incorporate all that and keeping it current. We don't necessarily need it every month, but when there is change, so that we see it. And we, we know, okay, we look at the one three months ago and we look and we say, okay, here's, here's all these different changes, yep, that adds up, perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that would correlate with your transfers, so.
Yeah, but the transfers aren't gonna be the same every month though, for the same funds, every month necessarily, right?
Right, but they, they don't have to be, um, because if you're only looking at what changed, you're, you're only looking at that and. I mean, whether you look at, whether you talk about all the other funds that are inactive or not being in, in use, I mean, we got this.
Well, I don't think we need it for anything that's inactive.
Too in-house, yes.
No.
No, but.
I mean, that would be, no.
But that's.
We're not doing anything with that.
Only the ones that have balances.
Right, that's all we're worried about.
That's, that's it, and those are what we need to worry about. If there's no balance, why, why are we even talking about it?
Right.
No reason to look at it.
No reason, and we would, we won't have that on the spreadsheet, because we honestly don't care.
There's no reason to. Right, right. But I, I, for myself, keeping stuff straight, I, and I would appreciate a spreadsheet like that, but I love spreadsheets to look at, that helps me understand things, so.
Well, it helps, it helps me too, as learning still, and so, yeah. We'll, we'll sit down and yes, we can add that to the transfer too, Kyle, but, um, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, uh, let the record reflect that we acknowledged the drainage transfers today. And Tyler's been waiting a while, so.
Sorry Tyler.
We are up to, we are up to discussion decision, acknowledge the report through DD one sixteen.
Perfect, morning all.
Good morning, good morning.
I'll, uh, report on this. This was a. Bit of backstory on this, there was some private tiling that was going on, um, in Drainage District one sixteen. That was acknowledged by another landowner in or around that district. That made the connection that it appeared that this additional private tiling work was crossing a district boundary. So it was bringing waters from outside of what was considered the district into that system. The tenants of the land that was being tiled were contacted, they were able to provide the private tile maps for that area. Those were then evaluated against what the existing district boundary is. So in the report, there is a district plat that shows the, what is the standing district, considered the district in red. That is the line off of the original plat of the district as it was established. The area that is shaded in red is what was reviewed as part of this letter of report. The tile maps, the private tile maps also attached to this report, uh, that were of the, essentially the original private tiling of the. uh, that were of the, essentially the original private tiling of those fields is shown, and the, the it's the black paper with the white tile lines on it. There's also a zoomed in portion that shows the very northeast corner and how the low that is in that area has been tiled out of the district or out of that benefited watershed by those private tiles. And then there is also a newer private tile map that shows that what was done was not any additional extent of tile, but it was laying private tiles in the gaps between those existing older lines. So with all of that information, we were able to review the updated benefited area using the digital elevation model, that's the LiDAR uh, elevations that were obtained by the state, made available to the public for uh, use, there shows relative elevation relief. Those are advertised as, I, I believe this is the newly obtained, so this would be two points every, for every square meter that are accurate to uh, within six inches, plus or minus three inches, very powerful for elevation examinations on areas of this scale. So with that system in place, we analyzed what additional area would be coming in. I say additional area, even though upon review, it, it appears from this data that all of that ground, except for the furthest northeast corner, that again is being tiled out, would have naturally drained to this area, and I'm of the opinion that it should have always been included. So what was done with this ground was, there was found the difference between the areas originally platted and displayed for benefit. We took the units per acre for those original grounds and we assigned that unit per acre to the area of ground that was now found to be benefited. There uh, in total, made complete two of the parcels, uh, so instead of being partial, now those two are using their full acres and then the, on the Lynch property, uh, all but the furthest northeast corner is now being benefited by the tile system per that private drain. So what that is representing then is my recommendation for the new assessable units for those parcels per what the original assessment schedules are. This is a little unique because it's, it's very similar to a reclassification of a, of a parcel that's already within a district on the edge. That parcel, we're not proposing any additional lands be annexed, because the parcel exists already within the district. However, we are recommending that because additional land above and beyond what was originally assessed for benefit on the original district establishment, because that is gaining benefit from the system, we are proposing this change to the assessment schedule to reflect that. Um, this does not come with any assessment now, no work outside of the preparation of this report has been done. And as I've noted in the report, per I believe the petition, and as it was explained to the, both the tenant and to the landowner, they were responsible for the cost of this report. So, um, in my mind, I see this being conducted very similar to an annexation, those landowners being notified and uh, there being a chance for them to speak and having these changes be made to the assessment schedules per landowner and. But that is my recommendation for now, just uh, for, for a bit of the Lynch Family Living Trust round would go from uh, their current assessment is seventy-one point three units. Uh, the, my recommendation now is a hundred and twenty-two point nine one units. The uh, Goplarood, am I saying that?
Goplarood.
Goplarood, oh right, uh, the current units are, uh, for one of their parcels is, uh, or for the Julia parcel, it is sixty-two point three eight units, recommending that that go to a hundred and forty-one point four six. And the non Coons uh, removable frost, the current oh, sorry, for the Julia, the current assessment was, I read the acres, not the, it, their current assessment is a hundred and sixteen point zero three, recommended to go to a hundred and forty-one point four six. And the next is assessable units of sixty-eight point five, recommended to go to seventy-nine point five eight. Any questions?
Sure, paraphrase, they haven't been in the drainage districts, have not been paying assessments, but now it's been determined that they are in the drainage district and will be paying assessments. On those added acres.
On those added acres, correct.
Maybe nothing to catch up, nothing has been paid over the last hundred years.
I, I am not making the recommendation that anything be, be back assessed, or we try to chase any of that, my recommendation is simply that where, we find ourselves here now, we make these adjustments to make everything more fair and equitable across the board, and we see that forward, um.
And do you wanna maybe put that in context of older undersized systems versus new recently improved systems?
Yes, this, yes, this system, again, uh, based on how the, the topography is, this is the natural outlet into the district, and I, I'm of the opinion this should have always been yet.
That was your report.
Right, having been out, uh, I think was a product of this being done in the early nineteen hundreds, not having the advantage of the tools that I have in front of me. Um, but this system, to my knowledge, has never been improved, there's no additional capacity that anyone is trying to, to take away uh, or gain additional advantage of unfairly. Um, and in the event that something is done, improvement or upsizing, capacity changes to this, this area is now fully recognized as being in, and it can, the design of such can take into account those acres. So from the time that that private tiling was done, e- even up till now, we haven't impacted the capacity negatively beyond when that was originally installed. And again, because of it being its natural outlet, I feel it should have been allowed to do it from the beginning, it just should have always been uh, contained and assessed for those benefits that it's receiving. Is that touched here?
Yeah, it just kind of clarifies a little bit of the reason that they shouldn't be paying a back assessment rate.
Yes, if there had been, if there had been a large assessment, an improvement project that really upped that uh, capacity, and that ground wasn't penciled in at the time of that improvement, for those grounds to come in now in this hypothetical, they're taking capacity away from what was originally designed, and it would most definitely be my recommendation that the district go, if they're to allow that to stay, that they go back and back assess for that portion of the improvement project a- at a minimum. Because the, the district has been given or, or told what their drainage coefficient would be, and once that's been installed, adding additional grounds to that only ever reduces that drainage coefficient, and there's nothing that we can do outside of an additional line or upsize and pipes, very, very costly, that would ever get that capacity back. So, uh, that is not the case here. There hasn't been a large assessment, there hasn't been something that would.
In recent history, lots, lots upon a time, there were.
Raise. Yeah, oh yeah, right.
Overback about a hundred years ago.
Yeah, right.
So, I'm not trying to be a pain in the hind end for every little thing, but how far back would be reasonable to go, I mean, twenty years, or thirty years, or ten years, or five years, or what?
I, I think, I think it would be reasonable to go back to any improvement project that had occurred since the time that this private tiling was installed. So it, it, let's say that something was installed twenty years ago that gained advantage from the improvement. Absolutely, but because it's been wear and tear and benefiting that length of time, um.
But in this case, there hasn't been an improvement for a hundred years, yeah.
For a long, right, right.
And there's, it goes back to me in my hypothetical perfect world. So you examined this small little portion of this drainage district, and there's no examination of, of any other corners or?
Nothing else has been, has been looked at.
Right, right, so there, there could be, in theory, there could be twenty more of these, however many acres it adds up.
Just in this district.
Just in this district.
Not, not looking at all the other ones, but it's it, it can be a costly thing to look at all of these.
Sure. I understand.
And it's very rarely my recommendation to go down that unless something like this has, has kind of a clear and present change, or if a large scale project is going on, that it is beneficial to know every last little bit for the sake of getting those assessments right. But, but you, you're right, this hasn't been.
That one about, yeah.
Right.
It's a main, it, it is, I mean, a little bit frustrating that people come out of the woodwork and are willing to pay when they, when it's gonna help them, but when they're, when they're been on the free ride, you know, they, they don't come out of the woodwork so much.
Welcome to drainage.
Yeah. That's not just drainage.
Right, well, right, yeah, no, absolutely.
So, you're saying that far northeast corner still goes another direction?
Yes.
And is that a, is that a different drainage district?
Uh.
There's no drainage district.
There is no drainage district, there, there is, there are, there's a network of private drainage, to my knowledge, from what I can tell, there's a, there's a network of private drains that are serving those areas.
Okay.
And a lot, I mean, I don't think Tyler directly said this, but um, a lot of the reason we talk about other significant improvements or whatever, improvements carry along the requirement to do a reclassification under the code. So if you're significantly changing capacity, you need to examine everybody's benefit at that point in time, so that's one of those.
Because benefits, i- improvement projects inherently create differences in benefits from them, from what the original systems provided.
Yep. Yep.
Very good, any other questions for Tyler?
I do have one going back a week or two. Uh, in that, in the one that was up south of Sway City, you should, you had a picture in your report of the outlet, and it was gonna be deep enough to, uh, so, so you're, I don't even know what size of the old tile, is it dumping, it was eighteen, or, and it just becomes a, uh, grade, and it there's no doubt in your mind in that case that, that, the, the ditch is gonna be able to handle the increase the, the faster?
Oh, not at, not at all.
Right, I, I see, that's all I, I don't need to, I'm gonna get assassinated here for asking questions.
Yeah. No, no, please do, uh.
That doesn't have to do with DD one sixteen, I would.
You're asking.
Airborne order?
Yeah.
Asking me to get going on drainage is a dangerous thing, but uh.
Tyler's office is out by north.
I welcome you.
Forza belt. Forza belt, sorry, sorry, yeah.
Um, yes, okay, so on, uh, again, on that, I would, uh.
Do we need any action today, or schedule a public hearing at some point in time, or?
Uh, I think, and my recommendation on, as always, is to, to check with uh, legal counsel on the recommendations, this one's a little unique because again, it's not recommending an annexation, it's recommending an alteration to the assessment schedules.
Right.
Uh, just for, for the benefit of everyone involved, I know that the, the landowner on this one was not thrilled about the idea of doing anything here, and both, the two of us independently had spoken to uh, attorney Jim Hudson, and this is per his recommendation for handling the situation. So that's, that's what we've done there, but again, I, I recommend that this be vetted, not from me to the board, but from the board directly, so.
But talk to legal counsel as to what the next step is.
Right, and, and then schedule the appropriate hearings and notifications from there.
Yeah.
But you have my information now and, and the recommendation of such, so.
Well, appreciate it, Tyler, and.
Yes.
Yep, all work.
Thanks all, appreciate it.
Have a great day.
Yeah, you too.
So we can just acknowledge this.
Well, let the record reflect that we acknowledged the report for DD one sixteen. And then, if it's alright with you guys, could we go through auditor board discussion, then we'll take a break?
No, I need to use the restroom.
That's not alright, okay. We're gonna take a break, yeah?
Yeah, that took longer than I planned for drainage.
For sure.
And I need some water, as much as I need to let go.
I did, yep.
I need to go potty too.
I need to get blood flow back from my toes.
Thank you, mother, very much, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Of course.
I need my water bottle.
Oh.
Cleaners are the best.
They are.
Paper towels.
Yeah, they are. Mom, you look so excited.
I'm very excited.
Yeah, we're way back here.
Drainage.
Yeah, yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah.
Seems like we all had to run out of here to deal with drainage.
Oh my goodness, I, I could, it's like, I drink coffee in the morning before I come here, and it's like, I, I don't gotta go. Did they say how long they're taking? Like, do I have time to run downstairs and get a signature?
Probably.
Okay. No. I know you guys just had your trip, so Howard had asked once, I thought we made some figures.
Yeah, so do we just ride on it, it's fine, and then turn it in, okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, very good.
Oh, can I put the claim forms for you on your desk?
I heard, I thought I heard, thanks.
Okay, yeah.
I heard, thank you.
Yep, you bet. Okay.
So uh just an information thing, uh what, what uh this, this came up on Saturday, just amongst people, guy said that uh he contacted Bill Maron for anything that needed to be done as far as maintenance around the road. And his, his road is one mile north of Highway eighteen, and I just assumed the county was, is it divided by maintenance shop or is it divided, how is it divided?
No, it's not, um I think to some degree they can't follow township lines for the actual employees, but that does vary, it's it's kind of a puzzle piece map.
Okay.
The foreman map is different than that too. That, I can't tell you the logic behind this.
I don't need to, that's fine.
But it kind of stair steps its way across from the northeast corner
Okay.
down to the southwest. It's not like middle of the county, north and south, or it's.
I don't need to know, someday I'd like to know the logic of that, but I don't need to.
Well, it's been six years and I haven't figured out the logic.
It worked for him, it worked for him evidently. I just couldn't believe it, I, here you are, you're talking the southern third of the county and, but I just.
Yeah. Well, it gets to be a lot of travel time from one end to the other and I don't. Are we planning on being here all the way till four or?
I don't, I don't think so. Um, I don't know how long uh secondary roads and self-insurance will take the rest. I don't think will take that long.
Self-insurance, we didn't get anything new, so.
So it depends on how long that takes.
Okay.
Non-departmental might take a little bit longer because Howard may have questions on the tax.
I'm getting a rap.
Taxes, so. It's good, Howard, it's all good.
Yeah, and it's, it's good questions because you have to understand the mechanics to really wrap your head around anything, so you're, you're asking a lot of good questions, um. And there's probably others that don't know the answers to the questions you're asking too, so don't go through that.
Going through non-departmental might help a little bit because it, it shows where the taxes come in, where they go, what fund they go into. And so that might help clear up things.
Go through that in the book?
Yeah, a little bit.
Again, I, I, yeah, I, I appreciate the comment that they ultimately were responsible, but you, you just, you just can't keep track of everything, you gotta rely on people to to alert you. And I, I realize Mike still, the liability stock is here.
To some degree, it's really not that complicated if the information's in front of your face.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really when you boil it down to
Mm-hmm.
dollars in, dollars out.
Yep.
It's, it's very simple at that point.
I'm not talking about just that, just the drainage, the whole, everything.
The, the whole, whole picture of everything, yeah.
You've already done fifteen different things that it could do.
Yep.
So what's what here, this is a vice, this is a separate microphone?
That is a microphone for the audio recording only. These are for the teleconference system, which Josh was just pointing to, and then the owls are the video and audio recordings.
So there's separate audio recording from the.
Yep.
Everybody back?
Everybody still stressed?
Everybody's still stressed.
I'm tired of sitting, so feel free.
Well, go ahead, Jamie.
Okay, so um I need to finalize our RSVPs for Farm Bureau meeting Tuesday, February fourth at six o'clock. Um, I need to know, um Kyle and Josh, if you intend on attending.
Put me down, the changes, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd probably say the same.
Okay, I will let them know all five of you will be attending then. Um, next week, um, we'll have Wellmark and then um, at six o'clock next Tuesday, the twenty eighth, is the EMA budget public hearing. So just a reminder, that will be on the agenda also, but just a reminder to have that on your calendars if you don't already.
What time?
Uh, six o'clock.
Okay.
Here?
I have it on my calendar, but.
I don't know where it's at, to be honest.
I think it's at her.
At her building, on Phillips.
That would be the emergency response and training.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, out at the Phillips Street building, yeah.
What, what is it, twenty eighth street building? What is it on the twenty eighth?
Um, it's the EMA budget public hearing.
On the twenty eighth.
Oh.
Twenty.
At what time?
Twenty eighth, at six o'clock.
Six o'clock in the evening, okay.
Yep. And actually, I should double check with her. I put that on my calendar and then she had talked about postponing her meeting. Keep it on your calendars if it changes or what, you know.
Okay.
And then, uh, next Tuesday, reminder, I won't be here, um, someone else, um, from our office will be here. Um, then we have approving the quarterly reports.
The only thing I have a request for you when you're not here is that you bring some of that warm water back with you.
I hope I can do that, I really hope that I can. Um, and hopefully it's warm when we're down there.
How is the Farm Bureau, that's six, I got it written down, okay.
Um, in February, uh.
Fourth.
February fourth, six o'clock.
All right, thank you.
Yep. And then I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Howard, anything?
Well, yes, I guess I went to the ISAC new officers conference.
How was that?
I was okay, it was, it was, it was all right, it wasn't spectacular, it was all right.
Good review?
Yeah, honest.
I certainly learned things, but they, they haven't, they're having another meeting on the thirtieth. Uh, I'm not gonna go alone or anything, but if somebody was in the early, if somebody was going, I'd go with.
Is that the statewide supervisor day? I was interested in going to that, I think.
What day is that again?
You're going down and coming back?
I will not be going, I cannot, I had a conflict that I couldn't change, but um I'll go to the spring school.
Yeah, well, I'll just talk to nobody. Uh, Matt, it was Wednesday and Thursday of last week and, um I don't think there was anything other than everybody, I, I get the, get the impression, or maybe you hear what you want to hear, but I get the impression, everybody, not everybody, but a lot of them were fighting budget problems, so.
Mm-hmm.
Problem being, I mean, revenue doesn't ever seem to be enough.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And they talked about open meeting requirements, I mean, individuals at, you know, at, at lunch, I can see where if there's only three of you, it'd be that much more of a challenge to talk to somebody.
Yep.
Um, same thing, we, um, Howard and I both attended and it was very interesting, there was some, you know, information that's always been and some new information that was good. Um, the open meetings was talked about when there's three supervisors and, you know, the topic of if we can go to lunch, and we absolutely can go to lunch together. Um, we cannot discuss county business.
Right.
Um, so that's, you know, the big kicker with that and, um I don't know, it was interesting, I, I found it to be interesting, I was, it was nice talking with people, nice, uh, meeting up with fellow auditors that I was friends with that are now supervisors and auditors that are still auditors, so it was, it was kind of a lot of fun too, so.
Good, yeah.
Well, I know that's why, uh, with the open meetings thing, that's why Wright County this past year went from a three-member board to a five-member board. They went through that transition as a county.
Yep.
Cause yeah, you run into somebody at Baumgartz and you discuss, hey, you know, Joe Blow, what's your opinion on this and, and there you got a, a quorum, so. But anyway, Kyle? Um, so we did schedule a executive committee meeting for C I J E C after we received, um obviously consult, in consultation with our attorney, but the public, um, record of that and the action that was taken is we approved a stay for the lawsuit with Hardy County. It's sixty days and basically gives us time to work things out outside of the court system, hopefully beforehand. Um, that will be on our agenda this Friday to be acted on by the full commission meeting and that's kind of the other update I have is we'll have that meeting on Friday, so.
Kyle, don't mean to interrupt, did you see my email, like, worded, asking him to have it on our agenda?
Yeah, and we did talk about that, um, with the attorney prior to, um, the meeting on Friday, I think that was Thursday afternoon. And Tony was supposed to be sending out an update to everybody that if we had already acted on it to send them the info, otherwise if we hadn't, we should not be acting on it right now.
Okay, he has not sent that yet, so, so don't act on anything then, okay, perfect, thank you.
So. Correct, at this point, don't act on anything or have it on the agenda.
Okay.
Until we square out some more things with this case.
Okay, okay. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Josh? I had no meetings. All right. Um, I also, yeah, I also had no meetings. Um, we've got, remind you, the assessors conference board meeting is tonight at seven o'clock, uh, if you're able to attend that, and.
I will be here.
Okay. Yep, good. It looks like we have representatives from all three entities, so should be good to go there. Um, I have been working on getting some quotes for the tile project over in the city of Widdomore. And looking into trenchless options, some lining options, UV and steam lining, and it's been kind of interesting visiting with contractors about that, but, um but, yeah, other than that, not too much this past week for me, so.
Can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
So, um, I'm on the North Central Iowa, I don't know, got to know, early childhood.
North Iowa Community Action.
Oh, well, the early childhood.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Our meetings are in bankrupt, they said they pay mileage, um, or I turn it into the supervisors, which is the preferred method, what are we supposed to do?
They pay, they will pay you mileage?
You know, obviously you don't do too. Yes, she did say they pay mileage, so I didn't know, is there a preferred kind of?
I would love to turn it in there if they pay it, it's like Central Iowa Juvenile Protection Center, they pay the mileage there and we don't turn it in at the county, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Typically.
I just wanted to issue.
Third judicial was that way as well, if, if it's paid by that organization, we usually do it there, otherwise you could.
If they pay it, turn it in.
It's all tax dollars from somebody, but it's still, yeah.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that it was, you know, I wanna follow the lead, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
If that's the lead, that was what I would do.
Okay. Well, I've got nothing else, um, we'll go ahead and, uh, go to budget workshops, I do I am gonna need to leave at eleven in person and I can zoom into anything beyond that today, but, uh so just so you're aware, what, what, uh, it looks like we have secondary roads to start with, so.
Yeah.
Um, why don't we call up Doug and we'll get started with that. Anywhere in this mess, I have papers from last week or? I, I got all sorts of stuff laying around here. I probably won't get sorted today.
Oh, um.
I don't know if you do or not for him.
Well, so did you get a hold of me, Josh?
Okay, so, um, now that you're on, yes, actually, no, not, but yes, so now that you're on public health board, Jack, I'll always sign the back of the checks and then we'll send them out there.
Oh.
So now that you're the representative, we'll have you sign the back of the checks and then Melissa, um, yep, takes care of it.
Okay, okay.
Hey, Lisa, it's Josh up here in the boardroom, um, we are moving on to budget workshops and we're starting with the, you know, just secondary roads, do you know if he's available or?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We could, we could see if. We could see if Derek's available as an email.
Yeah, I quite, one other thing I want to have for discussion here, we did all get an email, um, from Todd. Um, he sent it to all of us on the board and Tammy in regards to the complaint from Joe Bochy to the Iowa Public Information Board, um so if you guys have not seen that, please check that out, that is their next meeting, I think, is the twentieth of February, if I remember right, put it in my calendar, but, um.
They're being public information board?
Correct, um, he is alleging that we violated Iowa.
The, the sketch report was we did not, you get nothing wrong.
Well, yeah, our, we, we responded with information, um, Todd prepared that after communicating with us to make sure he understood the situation correctly. Then their report and their director, um, analyzed it and, um recommended that there's no issue, basically, so, um.
Todd, when Todd called down, he, he was listening to the whole hearing but couldn't unmute himself so that he could talk. So they didn't think anybody from the county was on the line, so they just wanna make their recommendation to the county, it sounds like, let them know what they need to do. So that's why they want it back on the next meeting.
Yeah, so, yeah, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, um.
Very good. Do you want me to grab Derek quick?
If we can, yeah.
I, however, how long was Doug gonna be using?
Uh, she said she was gonna have to track him down real quick and it's.
It probably wouldn't hurt to grab Derek, I mean, just even that, I don't know.
Yeah, he might, Doug might need a few minutes to set up anyways.
Hi, morning. Is E nine one one fairly quick to get there? You wanna do that real quick?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, let me do this right here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, guys.
Oh, yours is probably in one of those stacks.
Oh, kidding.
It'll say E nine one one on the top.
All information, oh, okay, I need to put all these in my.
Yep.
You gotta stack to the.
Yeah, I'll be like.
Somewhere.
Under E.
Under E, yeah, okay. Attorney, zoning.
There you go, thank you.
It should be in a newer.
Civil dissent, it's probably in the bottom here, cause that's the newer stuff.
Okay.
Non-departmental.
Oh, wait, I think it's, it's written E nine one one on the top. My book.
E nine one one, there we go, all right, we're ready.
Ready?
Yep.
What has he got there?
Yep.
Okay, so nine one one is totally unrelated to property tax, has nothing to do with your levy rates, completely separate. Nine one is funded through one dollar per phone line per month for all the landlines in the county and is prorated for all the cell phones in the county. The wireless cellphone money goes to the state, comes back to us after they have paid for their nine one services. The nine one board is meeting on February fourth to go over the budget. The biggest change on this year's budget is equipment, so Roger, um, brought up and asked if tough books would be considered as nine one equipment because they are used to respond to nine one service calls. We work with the state and that is an allowable expense, and so we've got a big project this year, um, Sheriff's Office, Police Department, uh, Fire Department also has, um, some budget money there. The rest of the line items are pretty much the same. That, uh, fund has about eight hundred thousand dollars in it right now, and even with this major project, we're still gonna end the year at five hundred-ish, so. Yeah.
Is that something you expect to spend that whole line item on, or is it, um? Is that something you expect to spend that whole line item on, or is it, um, is it?
It will be, so, no, so, so a hundred thousand of that goes into radio equipment every year, between a hundred and a hundred and forty-ish. Um, so this project, um, you know, is about two hundred thousand. And that's a little bit on the high side, but not a whole lot. Um, depending on where tough books come in later this year. And that'll be a project that'll last from July of this year through spring of twenty twenty-six. Part of that is because we have to work with, uh, Main Street Specialties to do the installs, to change equipment out, and that takes time to do those pieces, so. And then Josh is our voting member on that board. Questions, suggestions, concerns, anything you want me to bring to that board?
No, just the salaries, you're only at thirty-nine percent, so is, what's all included in that line item?
So that is, uh, for Christina and I, um, and it's about eight thousand apiece for each of us for the year, um, is what that comes out to be.
Okay.
And then, on that note, we did have a big street sign project in twenty-three, twenty-four, um, adverse signs, street signs. And we'll have that again this year, so that, um, eight thousand is a rough estimate on there, so.
If it, if it's eight thousand apiece, why is it two two one eighty-four, just curious?
Because it's all, um, uh, based on part-time hours. So if we have a major issue or something like when we did the sign project, we had a lot more hours than normal. Normally it's that eight thousand piece, so we leave a little extra in there, um, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we were towards the top of that, and we want to make sure we have enough in there for some part of it. Yeah, it's based on the band for that.
Okay, that's what you were explaining, correlating to the, um, markers and stuff, the, and.
Yeah, that was a pretty major project. We ended up having three hundred signs, were all either signs that were missing in the county. And we had about two hundred and fifty that were bent over, it couldn't read, needed to be replaced, um, so it was pretty major. And then in the cities, we were missing fifty-four, uh, intersection signs. So first afternoon, second afternoon, we provided that signed material to the cities. Will be following up and, and checking that this spring. And then we were also missing eleven hundred house numbers in all the communities and.
Eleven hundred?
Eleven hundred, yes. So we're working with the cities to try and push, um, their statutes out to the cities that don't have statutes and then try and get them to get those installed. So, uh, we'll be driving the entire county again this summer to go check all of that and see where the status of that is, so. Yep, yeah, a lot of hundred, and, and that's, we're trying to focus on that because we have had deputies and ambulance crews go to a small community, didn't know which house to go to because the house numbers were all missing, um, so it, it is an issue, uh, for law enforcement and ambulance service as well.
Anything else for Derek and E nine one one? Otherwise, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much. Doug, we are ready for secondary roads whenever you are.
Alright.
It's under engineer power.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, though, I do, I'm serious.
I, I saw you starting to flip and I'm like, I better tell him it's under engineer.
Trying to get all my, maybe sheets changed here.
I have not had a chance to adjust anything for health insurance, um, due to the decision that was made as far as contributions. So my budget that is in your packet does not reflect any of that information. I don't know if the board, um, wants to go into detail and go through all of that, or if you'd rather I, um, wait and get that, those figures in there and give them to Tammy so you can get them reprinted. Um, when I left last, we were talking about, um, wages and I, is it the board's desire to hold wages at four percent? Um, I can, I'd like to show you figures that I have from board minutes in January and July for the past five years and show you how county engineer's office wrote for it. They've not been keeping up with what other increases were. But if it's, if the board is not gonna accept that, the decisions that were made in the past, I'm not gonna go through it. Um, I think when you look at just in our office alone, you look at the amount of construction by the end of March, we're gonna have six and a half million dollars worth of construction. On contract, but let's just say it's five for sake of discussion. How much does it cost to have a consultant design a set of plans for a project? Eight percent, ten percent? Does that seem out of line? You guys have paid drainage.
They're not percentage-based.
Okay, so what are some of the total figures for, um, contract?
They're not percentage-based, they charge by the hour and that's because we don't have them in-house.
What kind of, uh, what kind of hour are they rating?
I think we're comparing apples to oranges there, I'm not even gonna go down that road.
Well, if you, if Cassuth County Secondary Roads has to, has to have consultants do the design work and have consultants do the, do the inspection, I think eight to ten percent is around the state, that might even be low. And then to cons, to inspect them, you're probably talking twelve to fifteen percent.
So are you saying our employees do that now?
Oh, they do.
And, okay.
They do all the design, they do all the inspection, yes.
Okay. Well, I think it's fair to say that we want department heads to come to us and tell us if there's any kind of inequities going on. And, um, we do need to make that fair, I think we've done that in the past. So, um, if there is, I mean, I want, I want to hear about it and I want to, um, make it fair for everyone. I, you know, I know there's other departments we've had to do that in and, you know, we're talking about it, changing it for the assessor because they weren't included in the past, whatever, um, changes that took place. I know that's a different, different department, but I think that we need to look at that. Yep. If things are not fair.
I've been thinking about all of this, I mean, go ahead if you have something, but I've, I've been thinking about all of this and, and, um, and as we go through each of these budget workshops, I mean, yes, fairness is, as a public employer, we need to achieve that especially, but the board needs to decide, are we going to just say, department head, here's what each of your employees should get for raises or not? And mark that as a fairness, you know, and try and as a board, say each department needs to get the same raise or whatever, you know, I'm just throwing things out. Or, or do we approach it in the aspect of, okay, department head, here's how much money you have to work with? If you're, the priority for the year is raises or purchasing equipment or whatever, if that fits within your budget that we're comfortable with you spending as a department.
Is that fairness? I, I'm just throwing this out here, um, thoughts that are going through my mind.
Um, is it our position to, to manage how much each employee gets for a raise? Especially in a different, there's all sorts of job descriptions, every department head that comes in here has different reasons for why different employees should be, receive different amounts or whatever, and they all might be valid reasons, but. But how do we as a board want to handle that in the fairness aspect? You know what I'm saying?
Well, I don't think that we can just say, oh, here's, here's your dollar amount.
I, I understand that too.
As much as you want, I think that really creates a big problem.
I understand that too, but, but how do you want to balance that, is what I'm.
And just remember, according to the resolutions we have, their raises have to be proportioned to the job description, so.
Right.
You have to, those people listed for clerks have to all get the same, though, you know, so.
Yeah.
But so many people don't have the same job description.
Right, exactly, I'm just saying, remember that part.
Well, exactly.
Right, no, I get that, but.
So that, I guess, was why my point was, um, there was some type of unfairness that was figured out and that's why the change was made. Did that affect any other departments that weren't included on that? Do we then need to get to a point and address these that aren't? And then, and then say, hey, we ended this year good, we feel like we're all on an even playing field. Granted, everybody does a different job, but the next year, won't next year be that much easier going forward?
I, I see where you're going there. My point being that we have a discussion, same for the engineer's office. You know, we want to fix the fairness, uh, whatever that means, but, you know.
Yeah.
The sheriff comes in and says, well, but deputies aren't being paid what they need to be, so we address that. Or we can make a case for EMS, we can make a case for, uh, whatever it is. Uh, the mechanics, the road workers, we were comparing to other counties and things and how does the board want to handle what is fair, you know? And that's why we had talked about doing a wage study in the past and that never got done. Um, I still think that might be helpful for the board to do at some point, but it costs a little money, but it is what it is.
Right.
Then it's a third party saying, this is what's fair, and we can base from there, but, um, cause I'm not qualified to say, yes, uh, you know, X employee should get X dollars amount. That's my own personal opinion.
I'd like to get to a point where people think that, okay, this is, and I don't know what Doug was gonna pass out, but, um, get to a point where we're like, okay, we, we solved some issues where there may have been some discrepancies. And then next year going forward, I think we need to take the lead role ahead of time and allow, and, and say, hey, here's, here's kind, we'll have budget fund balances all the time if we want them, they're right at our fingertips. We'll know where we're ending it, and then we'll be like, well, what we're kind of looking at for this year in, in hopes that we can get there is this percent. And then they know one at a time going forward with that. And then I do think that it would not be right for us if there is an inequity somewhere not to fix it. I, I mean, I do, I, I feel, and I don't, I want to see what he has to present, but I, I feel like we need to look at all of those aspects. And then, hey, we feel like we ended the year good and we've got people where they need to be. Whatever that figure is, whatever it's decided upon, and next year say, okay, we, we did, we worked really hard last year making sure all of this was resolved. Next year, we're, we're going four percent or whatever that number is. Am I, am I out of lines, thinking that that, is that a pipe dream? Is that what? I, 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 I feel like there's a lot of, um, there's always a lot of chatter and there's always a lot of, um, people that, you're gonna have those inequities that are, are fair. You're gonna have those inequities that people think they have that maybe they don't. Um, you're gonna always have that, but it's our job to make sure that people are compensated fairly. And not saying we can afford huge increases, but, um, maybe bridge a gap if there is one there a little bit.
I think one of the issues I see is if we want to go back to every decision that was previously made, there's a hundred ways to interpret each of them. And when it comes to the changes that were made for the wage scale and all that stuff, there's reasons those were made and they are legal reasons. And while they could have been made a, potentially a little bit differently, it could have been, um, how do I want to say, it could have been structured differently, um, I believe I did say that at the time in regards to longevity versus adjusting bases. But at the same token, um, that cat's out of the bag at this point. So we have to move forward and if we spend all of our time talking about what was, that's, that's the only place we're gonna be.
I guess my point was not what was. I'm saying that portion of it made that piece of the puzzle easier this year. It's been done, it's there, it's four percent. That's my point, it's, it's done, it's been decided, it's, it's four percent. If, I'm asking, is there other places we need to do that to make sure that we are doing that for everyone? That was my point. I don't want to go backwards, I know we can't go backwards, obviously. And I'm not dissing any decision that was made prior to this in the boardroom, I'm saying what can we do now? And, and to make that process easier in the future, and obviously this made it easier.
And, and to get to that point of doing four percent or whatever, um, you're also gonna, you start getting to that point and doing that, then the person who's at fifty thousand a year versus the person who's at a hundred thousand a year is getting very different four percents year after year. And so then the gap just becomes bigger, bigger as it compounds, you know? So you still have to have the conversation at some point. Um, not saying you can't do that in a year, but you are gonna have to address things as you go.
And actually to, to piggyback off what you just said there, the percentage increases exponentially continuously make a gap between top and bottom. Um, so we could look at doing a flat dollar raise across the board, wouldn't, wouldn't hurt my feelings at all. The percentage for each person would be different, but, um, there, there are, um, effects to consider with each way that is.
But to be, to be paid a hundred thousand dollar job versus a fifty thousand dollar job comes with qualifications that if you want, you know, if, if you want to be paid as the county engineer, then you can get an engineering degree. You know, I mean, it's just, it's a, there's, there's certain qualifications that are why they're paid more too, you know?
Well, like, for the secondary road foreman, were they normally considered as to what the union would get as an increase? So if the union would get four percent of the, did the foreman, you'd get four percent, is that usually how it went?
Generally.
So, and was there a certain gap that was between obviously being a foreman and being, you know, on the road department? So now is that, when we didn't follow that last year because the decision was made for zero, did that create an issue in your, in your office?
I don't quite understand.
Okay, so the secondary road foremen are paid this wage and then the road department is paid this wage. Obviously because they're foremen, they make more, correct?
They do.
Yes, so I'm saying by the secondary road department getting a four percent and the foreman getting zero, did that make that gap something that's an issue in your department? Because obviously they got a zero percent raise last year, or did they not? Did the foreman get zero last year?
Yeah, for zero.
Okay.
They're not covered by the collective bargaining.
Yeah, I know, but there's obviously a system that has been tried to be kept in place where they get the same.
Correct.
You know, well, what if we gave zero three years in a row and they had a, but you know what I'm saying, that gap then is, is.
The foreman, why would the foreman want to be foreman if they could get pretty the same to just be an operator?
Exactly, yeah.
The foreman, why would the foreman want to be foreman if they could get pretty the same to just be an operator?
Right, that's what kind of my point is, like, so when, when we gave that zero to them, we made that gap smaller, there's no incentive of being a foreman. I don't, maybe I'm not saying my word, using my words.
I get what you're saying.
But you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
If that was past history, well, that was changed in one year, now it's created problems. That's kind of my point, we, it, it created an issue.
Can I go back just a second to, to Amber's question or statement earlier about generalization? So, um, I agree with what she, she says in the aspect that you guys approved a resolution for the people that were on the step program, um, for what the starting wage would be use. Um, and then what they would be after a year. Certain departments, certain people were not included in that because they weren't on the step program. So there's no resolution for those people that have different job descriptions. So to extend on what she said is saying that needs to be done because we do have some people that are gonna be leaving this year, there's no starting wage set for them because that has not been approved by you guys. So it's gonna make it harder for that department head to hire somebody when they don't know what classification they're at. Am I making sense?
Yes, yes, yes.
So that, it, that needs to be done, and maybe this is the time to do that. So like Amber said, starting next year, it's done.
It's easier, it, it, it's easier going forward.
And if there's anything that's not covered under a resolution, that easily could be, and, and that base wage just needs to be set, and then, yeah, everything follows through it. Shouldn't be complicated under any circumstances.
Which for Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, he has something that's been established because it's been prior, right? You have like a scale.
I do.
Yes, so that he does have that, we just didn't follow it.
Correct.
So it created a problem. Not saying I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to go backwards, but I am saying it, we changed the history. It's no different than we've got this resolution, well, we're not, we can't change that next year.
And, and the sheet he handed out has got twenty-four, twenty-five wage salary info and twenty-five, twenty-six proposed proposals. And the scales and the steps are all the same. I've never seen that scale and step program, and I don't know where those numbers are set from. So I guess to me it's hard to follow a scale and step one, I've never seen that. I mean, this, this is the paper I'm referring to.
Yeah, I just wish I could find it.
No, I have this one in upside down, it's hard to read that way.
Well, Doug, do you have any information that you want to share while I'm here yet? I gotta leave the lab and I'll zoom in, but, but, uh, later, but I imagine you might be done by then.
Well, sure, I, I'll just quickly show you what I consider to be a, an issue. If you look at the last sheet of this handout, this handout has department heads and elected officials. Um, if you look at the last sheet there, um, this has department heads and elected officials, first sheet, uh, hourly employees for the second sheet, and salary employees for the third sheet. And what it is, is to bind it up into fiscal years, fiscal year twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-five. And fiscal year twenty-one on the left is a proposed salary wage for the fiscal year, the board took action. It's from the July one, twenty-twenty minutes of the board. And then on the right-hand side is the actual pay for the calendar year, twenty-twenty. And if you look at fiscal year twenty-four, you'll see, um, in the left-hand column that, uh, there were a group of people highlighted yellow, all received four thousand dollars. And the last person on that is the, uh, county engineer's office manager. The county engineer's office manager, if you look clear to the left-hand column, it shows how many hours per week those employees worked. The county engineer's office manager works thirty-eight hours a week. So if you break down that salary in proposed salary for July twenty, twenty-three for fiscal year twenty-four, that wage ended up being twenty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents. And then look at the top of that column, and you'll see people that were receiving eleven thousand, eleven thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety-three cent pay increase. And what that equivalent wage, when they worked thirty-five hours a week, is thirty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents an hour. And the Cassous County office manager does payroll, does bills, takes care of all the vacation, works with the auditor's office, payroll, bills, to take care of all that. Also takes care of transfer station as well as other duties. I don't understand why she can't be compensated like a deputy in an elected official's office. Why a he or she? And I think that's a, that's, she's, it's been two years now. I think that's a great discrepancy, and I brought it up every year. In fact, in twenty-twenty-four, every county engineer employee, every county engineer's office employee received four thousand dollars. If you look at page one, under that twenty-twenty-four, there were elected officials, the department head officials receiving twenty-four thousand, eleven thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. Is that fair? Every year I show you guys what comparable information from other counties as far as county engineers, assistant engineers, office managers, I present that stuff to you. Falls on deaf ears, and if you want to retain, if you want to be able to recruit, you've got to have a wage that is, will attract people to Cassous County, will have people stay in Cassous County.
So like Lisa, would you compare her prior to someone in the auditor's office? Cause she does do a lot of those same duties with the payroll and the claims and the kind of, yeah.
I do, yes. They, they, they're always communicating. If there's software issues, one will talk with the other and they might, they'll figure something out, but they're doing the same thing.
And in the past, I can only say, I mean, this is a long time ago, but in the past, I do remember conversations from being in the auditor's office, and, and it wasn't even Lisa at that time, at that time it was, um, Trish. But, um, they kept Trish similar to Jane. You know, there was always that conversation that Trish and Jane would be about saying they started about the same time, they did a lot of the same, one of the roles. Um, it was kept that way.
In fact, if you look at fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, you'll see that their wages, their salaries were similar. So again, if you want me to put in four percent, that's what, that's, I need to do that, and then I'll present the board. But I think that's a, doing a gross injustice for our foreman, that's in, in a justice to the engineer staff based on what's happened the last couple of years.
I don't want to leave guys, but I, I gotta get going, um, so I will zoom in when I'm able to.
Okay, sounds good.
Send you. Yeah, why don't you send me an email and.
Okay, thanks, Carter.
Yep.
We'll talk down soon.
Sounds good.
In fact, I, we're having difficulty finding mechanics right now. I don't know if we will be able to find mechanics, but it would help to recruit mechanics if we had a higher wage.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you. And I think if you look at cal, if you look at counties, our road maintainers, our operators are not as compensated as well as what other neighboring counties, what all over the state.
I, I mean, honestly, just talking about Lisa's wage first, I, I, it does seem, it is unfair to her. It is unfair to her, and I know we don't go off of years of service anymore. Uh, but she has been here longer than some of the people that have a higher wage than her, and she's doing similar work, and she works more hours. I, I, I absolutely, maybe we just need to focus on one thing at a time, but I, I feel like, let's talk about Lisa. I, she should be brought up.
She, she, she is one of the people that needs her own resolution or not, what is her title, Doug?
Cassous County off, engineer's office manager.
So maybe that's, that's one, um, job title we haven't done a resolution for, so. I don't know, there's other departments that have office managers too, I don't know what they make, but maybe that is something that needs to be done with a salary comparable to my office, for example, whatever you guys decide, I'm just saying, that probably needs to be done.
The, the hard reality of this is, I don't know that we can just say, oh, let's talk about Lisa, talk about one position, one piece of the pie, because they're all interconnected, I mean, we could talk about changing courthouse hours. That's been brought up for discussion a lot of times, and, and that's what these numbers are based off of. So, I mean, to some degree, there's a lot of moving parts there, and you can't, I don't think you can address one without addressing others.
Well, that, I don't necessarily think that that's been past practice then, because as you see, I mean, there has been department heads that get a twenty-some thousand dollar increase. So did you, did you only take into consideration that person? I think so, because everybody didn't get a large increase like that. So for us to say, we're talking about Lisa right now, I think that's fair. I think that's fair, her wage is not fair, her wage is not fair.
If you compare just internally, um.
I think that's what we should do. What do you, what do you?
The market, the market doesn't compare just internally.
The market doesn't have our employees, we have our employees, we have good dedicated employees. If we see an unfairness somewhere, we're doing that, we're doing that employee a complete injustice to say, I'm sorry, the market value's okay. But, but everybody else could, could be considered separately and get a high increase. That is completely unfair, completely.
I'm kind of with Tammy on the fact that, you know, her job description doesn't fit in with others, and, and maybe we do need to have a resolution to kind of set that apart, um, and use that opportunity to set a base wage and, and deal with it at that point.
So give her nothing now?
I think you need to do it now.
No, yeah, I, I don't think it was, let's kick the can down the road, I think it's, okay, here's the unfairness.
You're gonna have to budget for that.
Yeah.
When you, Doug, when you talk about fiscal year, and then you, you also mentioned calendar year, and they're not the same. Duh, I'm sorry, I apologize for saying, they're not the same.
That's correct.
Do you want to go back, you want, you want to cover what you said there again? What was the relationship between?
On July, I'm gonna say July one, the first meeting in July of the board of supervisors. The board supervisors act on what wages and salaries are, and it's published.
The fact that July one, or is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Yeah.
At the end of the year, the first meeting in January, the board says, this is how much everybody.
Maybe the calendar year.
And it is published.
Yeah.
Both of those are published, that's what those numbers are.
They're both here?
Yes, the, on the left-hand side is the, the proposed or the actual wage, and on the right-hand side, in between each of the bolder lines, the right-hand side is what was actually made.
In the calendar year.
In the calendar year, yes, so they're not the same. I mean, Grundy County just hired an office manager, fifty-seven thousand dollars. Winnebago County just hired a count, uh, manager, fifty-five thousand, Wright County, fifty-five thousand. Grundy County and Wright County have increases after six months. Adair County just hired a new manager, uh, sixty thousand, three hundred twenty.
Is it fair to, to say that, you know, her wage should be comparable ways to the deputy in the auditor's office? Or would you like something?
That's what I prefer, that's what I prefer, is similar to the deputies.
Yeah. I, I think that's fair. Uh, or everybody else feels, but I think it's fair, and, uh, I don't think it's fair to let her keep slipping further behind. Just one of those things now that we have to take care of when you guys took care of the other stuff, it, it's just, it's just good business.
The, the thing that makes this maybe a little bit difficult for me is we talk about years of service and longevity and all that, all the time. But the fact of the matter is, the value of the board, previous and up till now, has put on longevity is five cents for five years. That is a function of pay that is outside of the base, and if you're gonna pay for longevity, it should be paid as longevity, not as base wages. I, I have.
I don't know if the county engineer's office manager's ever, if longevity's ever been important than that. Um, I would, I would argue that point. I believe that, for example, in any elected office, it's located on the second floor of the courthouse, those deputies are tied as a percentage of an elected official. And as an elected official, if you get elected, you get paid that same dollar amount. There's no longevity in that at all. So those elected officials, they can start out day one and they will have salary such and such. The deputy that is in that office, maybe they're twenty years, they're gonna be based on eighty percent of that. There's no longevity in that. You're talking about longevity for, I don't know if you're referring to the secondary road department hourly operators, which anymore, you can see where they're starting to put nickels per year instead of pennies per year. Road department workers for longevity. You're, you're make, you're, that's a discussion that is not, has not been talked about, as far as I know, for office staff in this courthouse.
My point is, we're talking about longevity, but then we're adding it to the base.
No, no.
No.
No, uh-uh.
No, that's not true.
Well, you're talking about Lisa's years of service, but you're gonna add it to the base if you make an adjustment.
No, I, no, I mean, that's not what I said. I was saying, you guys got away from the years of service, but I said, doing that, we now have someone who's been here X mile years. doing that, we now have someone who's been here X mile years, making almost, I mean, it's it's not there, it's it's not there.
We we didn't.
I didn't say anything about um longevity increase, I said, we need to bring her wage up to what's there because it is behind, that's all I said.
We didn't go away from any longevity pay or any years of service, that wasn't changed at all.
What happened, what what happened was Kyle, the deputies were increased, their percentage of the auditor, which increased theirs, but Lisa was not, because she's not a percentage of Doug, so that increased the deputies and not hers, and that's where the difference happened.
And it was, and in the past, it was always that they were kept the same, or similar.
Yep.
So what if that changes?
Similar.
I mean, uh look into the future, ten, twenty years, what if the percentage of the deputy for the auditor's office is different? What if there's one instead of three, what if, whatever, I mean, those aren't just set in stone facts forever.
It isn't, but we're not necessarily saying she's going off of that wage, so okay, so Tammy.
She'll be adjusted, that position would be adjusted accordingly.
Yeah.
You're gonna adjust her wage down, under what's her.
No, no.
If.
You're gonna have a resolution, you're gonna have to go by that, just like you are anything else, it's gonna be starting at this percent, and you're gonna move, we have to change our resolutions every year, to change it for the increase that they get, four percent or whatever it is. So you're gonna do the same with that, right, am I?
You're not gonna solve ten, a problem that's ten years into the future today.
No, you don't want that.
You can speculate about a lot of different things, fact of the matter is, history shows that the county engineer's office manager, at one time, was being compensated similarly to deputies in the courthouse. And that is no longer the case. And if the board continues to do this, it's gonna make it difficult to get people to work in the county engineer's office. If 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 you know that an average wage is so much, and you decide to pay somebody less than that that average wage is, do you think they're gonna come to Cassuth County and work when they can go to another county and work? I mean, would you guys do that?
No, and so, I mean, I honestly think, and I I think we're spending, you know, too much time on this. If there's been an unfairness that's been presented, it's our job to make it right, I I'm for making it right. I I don't.
To the tune of what dollar figure?
Similar to a deputy in the auditor's office. They're at eighty percent, right?
I mean, it it's funny, let's just use cu- county engineers, it it's funny that two years ago, the Cassuth County engineer was compensated a certain amount of dollars, and over two years, that certain amount of dollars was a hundred and ten percent of average, and now, two years later, it's average. Other counties seem to be able to compensate their county engineer. Now, what are you, what are you gonna do? I mean, are you encouraging people to take different jobs, is that what, is that what the, what it is? Are you insur- and are you, do you just want average employees, less than average employees?
There's value in experience, and and you know, so and obviously, over time, when, say, the office manager retires, you you are going to get someone that doesn't have that experience, but right now, there's value in that experience. There's a lot of value in that experience, things run smooth, I I I don't know why we're even arguing about it when it's, obviously, there's an unfairness.
And what are you recommending, are you recommending going to a dollar amount or a percentage, but I we, I don't think we can do percentage
Well, I I don't, no, but similar.
just because of the fact that deputies in an auditor's office are, you know,
Yeah.
they take that percentage with the expectation that if she is incapacitated, they have to take over that department, now. I'm not saying the the job description and duties that Lisa does is any different, but she's not expected to take over the engineers department in the absence of Doug, that's the only comparison that I wanna stay away from, you know, by discussing the the percentage.
No.
Now, if we are looking at increasing her to get her back to the fairness, we need to do it based on a dollar amount and not discussing percentage.
Oh, yeah, and I didn't really mean a percentage, I was just meaning wage comparable to that.
Based on that being. Okay. Yep.
Not, I know she can't be a percentage, I mean, I get that, but.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was clearly that there's the reason why there's, you know, the percentage on deputy versus.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Absolutely, and it wasn't my intention that should be at a percentage, but a wage similar.
Okay.
And then if it gets to that point, then it's, like I said, it's gonna go off of the future then, okay, next year, everybody gets two percent, whatever it is, that's what it's going to be, but somebody has to be at that fairness level first. I I I'd like to see this year as being that, so next year's easier, easier, we spent, we spent a lot of time on this.
Well, I also caution, doing a large jump for, you know, you you know, we need to look at the numbers and and see if we can find a good medium to reach, because if we do a large jump for one person, and this has happened in the past, then there's some animosity there, you know, why did this one person get this large of a jump and the rest of us didn't, are we valued less than this one person? You know, we're only looking at that one too.
It's the same, it's the same as last time, we had to fix.
Did you think about that two years ago?
I know.
Yeah, exactly.
Was that discussion brought up to you that you don't?
It was, it was.
Well, it, but it didn't include everything.
Why, why then did it not, why did it not have the same reaction as what it, from the board of supervisors, as what it does today?
I, for me, it did, you know, I, it was, it was.
So he'd be able to justify today with the same justification as what.
We also scaled back what that increase was to make it, you know, not as large of a jump. Too, if I recall, we did not do that major jump, we brought it back a little bit, and that's what I'm suggesting that we do here. We don't jump to get it to, you know, exactly where it's at.
So what are you suggesting?
That we find, you know, we look at the wages, and we try to find a a fair jump that doesn't make it, you know, where we're increasing someone twenty-five percent, you know, that's, I'm not wanting to do that, because then that creates that.
It shouldn't create it, because there's a good explanation for it. The explanation is, there's been an unfairness, and it's being corrected, and so that we're all a little bit, yes, granted, there's different job descriptions, different professionalism, different everything, but we gotta get to a point where it's fair. And I don't know if anybody would, maybe she felt that way, maybe she felt that way two years ago when you made the decision. You know, o- okay, well, okay, we can say that same thing, she felt that way. I don't see why we have to scale a wage back that we feel is fair, because it's been unfair for a couple of years now, is what I'm hearing Doug say, uh granted, I wasn't here, but I'm hearing him say that, and he has proof here to show it. So, I think, like I said, I think we're spending a whole lot of time on one thing that should be, yeah, we need to make this fair, it it's, to me, it's easy, I don't know why we're bucking the system that way, and we didn't buck it before.
There's always a lot of talk about fair and equal, and everybody should make the same. That's what I, that's what I hear.
Well, being a long job, if I'm wrong.
Wrong, it's impossible.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, somebody created job descriptions and and uh, and I I'm not aware of them, I'm not looking at them, I'm not doing anything. Doug, you you wanted to make what people are making comparable departments, uh I I are comparable, but you don't want those people to go down. You only, you only want the employee in your department to go up. I don't even, I don't even, it's probably not even logistically or legally possible to take anybody backwards. When when I ask, very informally, uh I had a appointment yesterday where I asked, and and what I took out of that, the answer to my question, there wouldn't be anything totally out of line about what fifty-five thousand dollars, somebody making fifty-five thousand dollars, but when you turn that into sixty-five thousand dollars or seventy thousand dollars, Tammy has already said, she wants uh two people to go up to eighty-five percent of her, which is, which is, it's gonna take them to seventy thousand dollars. That gets past what what any sort of norm is in the community. Are are we saying that people that work in the courthouse are worth more than everybody else in the community? If the answer is yes, tell me, uh that's possible, that's true.
I I don't, I'm sorry, Howard, I do not know what.
I don't wanna sit here.
Managers in in private industry, if you can, if you can get that from from private industry, I'd like to see it, I've never been able to.
Right. I can show you.
I I could walk to the elevator manager and ask him what what uh people, a list of all the employees, I don't know what he would give it to.
I can show you old sur- well, I'm trying to throw them away by now, but I can show you plenty of old surveys about what, you know, different uh job descriptions got in the in the elevator world, you you know, and anyway, I I don't wanna sit here and alienate your employees, I don't wanna sit here and alienate Tammy's employees, I don't wanna alienate my fellow board members, but everybody cannot make seventy thousand dollars a year, plus a jet, plus a dish, and that's not even I got a call this week or last week, I suppose it was last week, not this week, this week's brand new. With, you know, he, this individual wanted to pound on, they only work thirty-five hours a week, and I told him, I said, I'm not interested in that discussion. You know, you're not, you're not talking about, you don't care how many hours they work, you care how much money they're making. You know, it's not gonna make him feel any better if they come in and get the same amount of money for working forty hours a week, that that's not what's gonna make that person happy. I'm not saying anything, I'm just rattling, and I apologize. But the answer is not that everybody makes the same amount. Then there is no longevity, there is no benefit to to being here, keeping and retaining employees. I don't know, I don't, and I don't have the answer, my wife would say, oh, you're good at identifying the problem, but you're not coming up with any solutions, that's true, that's absolutely true, I'm not coming up with any solution.
Well, is it safe to say that we have higher wages because we have longevity in our employees? Like, you know, if they're automatically, no matter what they started at, they're they're always gonna going to have that bigger wage if they're here fifteen or twenty years, I mean, they're not gonna stay at a wage, nobody does, private or public.
So you you actually kind of identified one of the core issues and one of the reasons that certain individuals had substantial increases when we went away from the STEP program, because you had people doing the same jobs that did not have the ability to make the same money doing that same job. And that was where the legal issue arose, and i- in that regard, some people now are being compensated for someone else's longevity, and is that right? No, but longevity was figured into the base previously, and for the most part, instead of being paid as longevity.
Well, and that's just not my point, my point is, when, you know, and just answering to, not everybody can make seventy thousand. The people who are making seventy thousand have been here, there, that comes with, that comes with some longevity, and you're not going to reinvent that. Maybe now, in the future, that's reinvented by this new plan, but we have people making more because they're here longer.
And not just that, and I feel like I can speak, cause you're talking about my department, but remember during the compensation board, when they were here and presenting information and saying that maybe we may need to look at other counties that have the same value as ours, instead of the same population, it's the same as walking up and down the street. What my girls do in my office and these other offices are for the whole county. We have, like Marsha this morning, seven hundred drainage districts, or drains, funds, you know, we have, Melissa's paying payroll for the whole county, we're getting calls from the whole county, is it comparable to the people that work down the street? I don't know, I don't know what they do, but before you say, you know, should they be making this money, please come into our office and see what they do every day. And then tell me what you think they should make, or if they're comparable.
Yeah, and I hope you don't think that I was saying anything, I I just wanted, I just think sometimes with that longevity though, does come more pay.
No. It does.
You know, obviously, if you're here a year versus twenty-five, y- you're, yeah, you're going to have more pay. And honestly, I feel that's a little bit fair, but that's me. Um, when we changed the system, my point of the matter is, when the system was changed, not saying it was wrong to change it. When we changed the system, it created some differences elsewhere, that's all I'm saying. That's what I would like to see addressed, hers sticks out like a sore thumb.
Well.
Basically, it does.
And I can, I can acknowledge your point of view for that, but what I've been saying now, and I said it previously, when we had this conversation about changing the STEP program to where we're at with the wage scale and the resolutions now. If you're gonna talk longevity, it should be paid as longevity, not as base wage, and some of that's mechanics, but it stacks on itself. Uh, and then, when someone leaves, and a new person comes in, and they start at the same wage that a previous person with twenty, thirty years of experience had, it stacks on itself, and it happens in the private sector too, where you say for a round number, you're paying someone fifty thousand, and the new person you're gonna, maybe you need to be at or closer, maybe even above that for the next person you hire, but at the same token, um the mechanics of how that's calculated makes the difference in our budget, and that's what I'm trying to bring attention to now, because I don't know if that's fully realized.
This resolution that you refer to for the STEP program, uh is it available?
The STEP program was previous, I don't think there was a resolution.
Yeah. It's it's not a STEP program, it's it's identifying starting wage and your maximum wage per year for clerks. Right, just clerks, but yes, it is available.
Yeah, that was what we went away from, not what we went to.
So there is no resolution for a STEP program?
Yes. It's not considered a STEP program, it's only, it's only identifying what clerks in the courthouse make.
So they start at a wage, and after a year, they're given a wage.
So.
They go to six months and then a year.
And then after that, it's strictly based upon the percentage?
Yes, then that every year, if there's a raise given, they have to, that starting wage changes.
And longevity is factored on top of that as a base.
What resolution is that?
Um, I can send it to them.
Tammy, did you copy the law along?
But this is for clerks.
Clerks, yes.
The job.
How many clerks are out in the courthouse?
I'd I'd have to look, but.
I mean, are we talking the treasurer, the recorder, the auditor?
The recorder, auditor, yeah.
Yeah, basically, because the attorney's a little bit different.
Attorney has resolutions too.
Yeah, but there's, are they considered clerks, what are they considered?
They have different titles, but it's it's all the same structure for resolution and wages and all that.
I'll see what I can find, Doug, and I'll send those to you.
Well, obviously, Doug needs to know what to put in his budget, and, you know, we've we've been trying to finish his budget for several weeks now. His is a very large piece of art hustle, and granted, I know his fund is different, but he needs to know a wage to put in.
Well, it's still. Is the intent of the board to, I went through the property tax and local option sales tax, is that, does the board, for revenue, is that, does the board have concerns about that?
I have concerns about that, because I'm, I'm meaning not maybe this year, but going forward. The, they are talking about getting rid of local option sales tax, if that happens, we're in a world of hurt. And that was discussed at our meeting here last week.
That's discussed.
Who's, who is, who is they?
So. Um, well, the legislature, and they're talking about getting rid of local option sales. Um, well, the legislature, and they're talking about getting rid of local option sales tax.
They, they talked about getting rid of the county's local option sales tax, adding a cent to the state's sales tax, and then. Funding the trust fund and redistributing that one sent back to the counties that they previously had.
How would they redistribute?
That really wasn't talked about.
I don't know, and, and the mechanics of it have been a question and concern all along because are we actually going to lose that cent? Or are we actually going to get it back, and it's, it's a very fair concern, I.
Have you guys visited with the legis, your, the legislators that represent the people of Cassuth County?
Not yet, honestly, this was just brought up, and I actually had meant to say that today during our discussion, board discussion, and I forgot about it. But then when he, we started doing the budget, yeah, that reminded me, and that's a big concern, big concern for decisions going forward, obviously. Um, a million dollars, you know, going to the road, we, we tied our hands with the million dollars already going to the TIF. Um, that goes away, there's an issue because that, that alone has been what has helped us keep rural property taxes down. Uh, and not have to be raised, well, obviously, and now we're tied, and we can't raise them with, you know. So, this is a huge issue, well, you know, we've got, I don't like to see that million dollars tied up now, that, that's a big concern. Cause our fund balance.
But, but that will be directly paid back by the TIF.
Yeah, but for now, it's tied up.
Well, will be the what? Excuse me?
The million dollar internal loan that she is talking about.
I think she was talking about local option sales tax.
Yeah.
I was, but I'm saying, I, I was talking about both, I was talking about the local option sales tax, we've got a million dollars that we. On budget to put in secondary road fund, we, which is out of rural basic fund. We've taken a million dollars out of the rural basic fund to put into the TIF. So we've tied our hands with that money, which has lowered our fund balance, which then really enhances the concern if that goes away. And if this has been talked about for a couple of years, why weren't we thinking about that when we made that decision? Because that's an issue. Huge issue.
That stuff has been talked about extensively.
Okay, so then why weren't we thinking about that when we took a million dollars out of our fund?
Because that loan will be directly paid back by the TIF, not by, um, just, it's not dollars that just vanish. It still counts towards local effort, if it's spent on, uh, faith, roads and marriages and all that.
I did, I understand, I don't need to, you know, to explain the process, because they do understand the process, I'm just saying, it's gone. That's gone from our fund balance, yes, will it get repaid, but that takes time, there's also other loans that are getting paid back first.
Which came from the same place.
So. Yes, I, I realize that, I realize that.
I guess we talked about putting four percent in for everybody and seeing where that got us and then coming back and addressing things after that. I would say that's the tone we started with, that's the tone we should finish with until we see where we're at at the end of everything, but.
Well, ultimately, the secondary road fund is, has a lot of things that come into it, and one thing is rural taxes, general taxes. And local option sales tax, the sales and service tax. Does the board have any desire to change what was presented to you last week?
I don't understand your question.
Well. Local, local effort for the roads, right now, the revenue coming from local. For the secondary road fund is two million eight hundred thirty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars. And then there's a million dollars of local option sales tax, the total revenue is about twelve million dollars. So my point is.
Well, we have to.
The expenditures in the secondary road department are paid for with the revenues. Whether that's the salaries of the road workers, the salaries of the engineer's office, construction projects. If the local revenue is gonna be the same, I need to know, if it's not, there's gonna be more changes to the budget.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm no way being smart as here, I don't, so you're, are you asking us, we, me, whether the revenue is gonna be the same?
Whether the local revenue, if the plans are, as I presented it here, I gave this to you last week, will, will those stay the same?
And do we know the answer, do we know the answer to that?
Well, the, one answer is we have to, we have to fund seventy-five percent, right, is that the dollar amount that's correct?
We, seventy-five percent of the maximum amount that can be levied.
Okay.
We have to have local effort, which, the way that things are budgeted, in the budget that's presented. I'll put it together, I'll, uh, again, four percent is. That's difficult to retain and recruit. So, if the engineer's office. I, I think that everyone in the engineer's office is worthy of the wages that I presented. And four percent increase. Compared to what was done two years ago where a flat dollar increase was given to everyone in that office. No other office had anything like that. So. The board continues to, for whatever reason.
Well, I, you know, I think I've made my opinion known, I think that we need to.
Josh, is that what you say too, four percent?
For now, yes.
Howard?
Yeah, that's what we told everybody that came through here, put it in four percent, let's see where we're at with revenue, and, and I'm, I'm not.
Okay. What, I mean, if. If the fund is, if the secondary road fund is growing. Does that mean that you're going to look at the possibility of increasing wages and salaries? I mean, a, a year ago, it wasn't even a year ago, six months ago, we were talking about increasing. Uh, the board of supervisors was talking about increasing the road workers and, uh, the mechanics wages. And then they said, well, we'll discuss it at budget time, now it's staying the same.
So, that's one thing that was discussed earlier that's continued to frustrate me, um. And I'm just gonna put it bluntly, I don't think the mechanic's wage and the equipment operator's wage should be correlated. I've said that before, I'll say it again, they're not the same jobs, and that's not a, that's not an attack on anybody that's currently in either of those positions. That's a, the market is wildly different between those types of responsibilities. And I've advocated for increasing the mechanic's wage to get closer to market comparable. For the prime reason that we've had open positions for what, three years now?
What wage do you want?
I've, I've given those numbers multiple times to you.
I, I just asked again.
If we're gonna have those conversations in an open forum, I, I'll be happy to do that, but it's not gonna be, um, today with none of my paperwork in front of me. I, I did plenty of research before, I've given you numbers that I thought were appropriate, um, and. For lack of better terms, you didn't agree with me.
No, I don't believe that, please do not, please do not.
I do.
Anybody, that's your opinion, I've always said that our, we need to hire mechanics, we.
Yeah, but then before, like with everybody else, and they're not the same.
If, if you.
I'll, I'll agree, you did say you feel our mechanic's wages need to be higher, but you also felt they had to be tied with equipment operators and.
No, I said both of them were underpaid, I never said they had to be tied, I said they both need increases. And I'll argue that with you till I'm blue in the face, if you want to.
Well.
I never said they had to be the same. And if, if you can point to that date and time.
Those conversations were not public board meetings because those were union discussions about union.
You always have an excuse.
No, that's the fact, I mean.
No, the fact is, I said both, road employees, mechanics, Cassuth County engineer's office manager. Assistant engineers, county engineers, they're both underpaid, they're all underpaid, I've been saying that this whole time. And I, just. You, two years ago, there was a gross injustice done, and you were part of the board. And you were the one who said, it's gonna be four thousand dollars to everybody, that's what happened. Now Doug got it, you made a mistake, now the rest of the board is listening. Now, if you wanna recruit and you wanna retain employees, you better get to some sort of comparable wage.
And out of all those positions you listed, which one has had open positions for two plus years? All of them?
We've, I've been, all I've been doing is applying, making out advertisements, we have been able to get people. And we've lost people after two years.
For a variety of reasons?
Variety of reasons, yeah.
I do think.
So then, uh, again, I'll ask you, what should the mechanic's wage, what should it start out at? Should there be a probationary pay period? Is that applied to the mechanics, is that applied to the road workers?
Yeah. I think that should.
What's mechanic one, what's mechanic two, what's mechanic three? Are you gonna create a new mechanic description so that you can possibly justify paying for different things?
We've had those conversations, I've never been told to do that.
There's never been a decision made, there's not been a decision made.
Correct, because we never left the conversation phase of doing anything.
So who's, who's in charge of making that decision? And not co, having the conversation about it, who is in charge of making that decision?
I started that conversation from the.
No, we're talking about the decision now, we're not talking about conversation.
We can put it on the agenda for next week specifically if you want, then we can have that conversation, we can have a specific decision.
You're, so you're talking about adjusting the secondary road. Labor union agreement?
Yep.
Would you like to have Renee present?
Sure.
Probably would be helpful.
Okay. Do you want me to invite the union rep?
Probably should.
Okay, you could, as a board, I want this decision, I want a uni, I want some sort of this decision by the board supervisors here. That you want to open up the labor union agreement negotiations.
Uh, I do not, I think that needs to be done at the time that we're doing it.
We don't have time.
I think we are spinning our wheels, this conversation is just. You know. I don't, I just don't even know how to say it, this is a very unhealthy, uh, conversation. It, it's, it isn't, it, what it is, is an argument. It's an argument, and that's not what we're here for, we're here to listen, when a department comes in here, I don't care who it is. As to what they want and need for their department, that's our job to listen, it's our job to say, hey, here's your budget. But if we are gonna constantly butt heads and not listen, we're never going to get anywhere, and you know what? That is what the last over an hour has been. It, we, it is not productive, we need to produce this budget. If you, if we need to talk about wages during labor, during, when it's due, which is probably pretty soon, right, during the third year?
During the third.
Third year?
The third year will begin in July.
Will become. So we will be talking about it, that's when we address this, that is when we address this, not now, because you know what doing it now does? Waste time.
It, it pro, also prolongs the fact that we've had open positions for mechanics for two plus years.
That's, well, okay. Fine, that could be a discussion, not now, not when we're trying to just do a budget.
Well, we've also said from the beginning that we were gonna have everyone plug in four percent and we come back and review things. And then we've spent the last hour talking about whether we were gonna do that or not.
Well, right, but also, when he came in the first time, that's what we did talk about, we did talk about that.
And, and it, and it didn't get changed. So are we following through with what we said in the beginning or not?
Well. I agree with that statement, that we did say that, but we also said we were gonna re, we were going to address any inequities. We, that's how I gave your first budget three times?
So, I'll ask, I'll ask a question, how many dollars of construction are you planning, uh, to?
And you're.
Three times?
We, we got the one point three, one point four million dollars in the capital projects. Do you want me to budget for that one point three, one point four million dollars? Or is your intention to take out a loan and have a greater amount of projects that are. That are completed? And again. Uh, I want you to realize that the county engineer's office completes the plans, the county engineer's office does all the construction inspection. And, uh. I, I believe that. The road department, the county engineer's office, um, based on the annual reports, the miles of road. The area of the county, we're one of the best. Secondary road departments in the state. Most economical, we serve and we do it in an economic way. So, if you want me to just do the one point four, I'll do the one point four.
That's what we have borrowed at this point in time, so that's what I would suggest.
Okay, I, I need a little more clarification, so the one point four includes a million you just put in there.
I think that's available.
Yeah, it's one point three five, Tammy, is that about right, the capital fund?
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I think, cause I think you said three something was there previous, and then a million dollars, but yeah.
Okay.
So when you, when you say that, are you saying then don't give any local option sales tax to the secondary department?
No.
Or what are you meaning by that, like, cause?
Construction.
The transfers, right, are you talking about taking transfers?
No, we're just talking expenditures, yeah.
Oh, these are the expenditures out of the capital.
Okay. Yes.
Capital projects of fund. But they have to be part of the five-year program in order to be ranked, thank you.
And that's where you categorize them by sources of, of funding and all that shit as well, right? Whether it's federal funds, farm-to-market, TIF. It's all broken down.
Yeah, that would be, that will be, the program is, is proj, projects that we intend to spend money on construction. And that's a line item in, in the budget, the county budget.
Question, certainly you, I assume, and you, you spent far more than that on a normal basis, right?
Oh, we're up to two, two and a half, but when we had a big, we had a larger balance. Uh, the board chose us to spend, like, one year we did almost, uh, locally four million dollars, along with the.
When you say locally, you mean?
Paying for it with local dollars, instead of farm-to-market dollars or federal dollars.
And what's the local revenue going to be?
It's about three point eight million dollars.
Or this coming fiscal year?
That's what I proposed, yes.
I don't understand word games, or they think so, I, I don't wanna play the game, is that what we, that's what you think's gonna come in, is three point eight million of local money?
No, I, that's what I am using for, um. That's a million dollars worth of. Of local. Of local option sales and service tax. That is the maximum levy that can be lev, levied for all properties in Cassuth County, which is sixteen, seven eighths. This is for the secondary road department. The maximum levy on all properties is matched out. That can be done is sixteen and seven eight cents, and the rural service levy is a dollar eighty-two. Dollar eighty-three per thousand, and the maximum that can be is three dollars and three eight cents.
Yeah, I, no, I don't, I, I understand that these are the three, I, and I can add the three numbers, but I don't, that's not all available for capital projects.
That's the amount that's getting transferred to secondary road?
No.
You correct it. You correct it. Some out from the general base fund, and then as it comes in, it transfers to the secondary road, same with rural services.
Capital.
So those are the total amounts that will be transferred throughout the year. And this million dollars is the local option sales tax. It's done into, to transfers. And all of those are used within his fund, and those, those are part of our local match.
Local effort.
A local effort.
And, and that, that goes into the pool for all expenses. It's not just road construction or anything. It's the whole budget.
Yeah.
Knowing what you know, this is one point three or one point four million for capital.
That's in a separate fund, and that's already there. That, that balance is already there.
Yeah.
That's the confusing part.
That's not part of the secondary road fund. What will happen on those projects is our office will design them, our office will inspect them. When it comes time to pay a contractor, I will take a voucher to the auditor's office. And the auditor's office will prepare and make sure that the money comes out of that fund. If it was a local money project, our office does the design, our office does the inspection. The, the amount of money goes to our office manager, and that money comes out of a, out of the secondary road fund.
So sometimes a particular road paving project gets paid out of the secondary road fund, and sometimes it gets paid out of a different fund?
Oh, there's, the majority of our construction is actually out of, uh, out of the Iowa Department of Transportation's who pays for it. Last year, or this year coming up, all the reserve seat projects, none of that money will come out of our local fund. That's all farm-to-market fund. We have a farm-to-market account, um, and then that's how federal funds are, are as well. They are taken out of, paid through the Department of Transportation.
So, so your question is, your capital projects are one point three million out of a local fund. Is that a question or is that a statement?
The statement would be that all the money for construction out of that capital projects is gonna be that, whatever balances in that fund.
Which is, you spend the whole thing.
I don't, it depends on what project is. I, I will not be able to spend a dollar over that balance, because then we would be negative.
I think. I think the confusing part, um, Howard, is you have to budget a certain amount in order to use it. Just because it's in there doesn't mean you can use it. It has to be budgeted. So he wants to budget that amount so it's available.
Which makes sense, I mean, that he would.
And, and we're positive it's gonna be there through taxes. Is that correct?
It's al, it's already there.
It's already there.
It's already there.
You're spending money that's carried over, or?
Yes, this, this is one of those strange accounts.
It's, it's already out, basically.
Yes.
And the board could borrow more money and construct more projects. These are, this is money that is going to be paid back with incremental financing on the Gold Eagle.
If you borrow more?
All of it. All of this is tied to Gold Eagle improvement, to the northeast of Titanca, as well as the wind turbines that were included. Uh, there are some wind turbines that are not included, uh, in, in that area.
But you have to borrow safely so that you know that the income you have coming in is going to eventually service that loan and pay back our rural basic fund. Or that's, you know, basically, it's, it's still our money, it's just, we're tied in how we can use it.
So is it, is it, let's see, let me rephrase, correct me when I make a mistake, but the, the reason to borrow money, there might be three that I can think of real quickly. You think the interest rate's cheap, you think the, uh, inflation of the project is gonna outpace the interest rate, or we just play neat, no matter what. Is that safe, is that?
The third, the third, I would say the third reason you gave.
We just need to do it, we need to do it now.
We, we have roads that we are not going to be able to maintain if we continue, and, and correct me if I'm wrong.
So.
The board, that's why we tip.
So out, outside of the three reasons you gave, you can have a conversation about those reasons. But the reason you have to borrow for the TIF is because you functionally, fundamentally cannot collect the revenue in the form of tax increment financing if you don't have debt service and certified prior to that.
Mm-hmm.
So, so it, it separates the timing aspect of it and the mechanics of how it comes into play. Because even though we went through the process, did an revenue renewal plan and all that, if we didn't certify debt, we wouldn't be able to collect the revenue or all of the revenue from what is projected to come in. So you have to have debt on front, and that's, that's the functional side of why we get an internal loan.
Yeah, I've, I've heard that, I, I'm proud of that.
But, fact of the matter is, we have more, I could give you a program, we don't have enough money to, to do all the, we'd have to close bridges. We would have to do something with roads if, if we are not, if we don't have increased revenue.
So, borrowing money against the future to, to fix, excuse me, what has to be done now? And I'm not, not saying that that's the wrong thing to do, but where does that put us in the future? Does that put, does that, you know, if we do this project now, is the life of it long enough that, that we're catching up?
It, it could very well, I think what you're alluding to is we're just, we're making the decisions more difficult.
Getting the end of the road and thing, thing.
I mean, there, there, there is no. There's, there's little, this is Doug Miller's opinion. There's little incentive for anyone to invest in Cassuth County.
We are for now, because of the shape of the, or did you get the amount?
You're talking about private industry?
Perfect. Yep.
To increase the tax base, to increase the valuation.
And you attribute that to?
There's a lot of things. And not, I'm gonna say Cassuth County, but I'll say state by. I mean, I don't know if you've been reading what's going on in Des Moines right now, not with the Polk County Supervisors, but the Des Moines. There's, there's very little incentive right now to, for developers to build housing. And local, this is Doug Miller's opinion. Locals are being strapped, and they're not able to pay bills. I wrote to the legislators last year. I didn't get any replies. Somebody needs to tell our representatives what's going on. When we had a, I mean, Cassuth County had a, uh, in the next five years, the values are gonna continue to go up. Because, in rural areas, because we have some wind turbines.
We don't put to use the money.
That value is frozen now.
It's not the values, it's the revenue.
Yeah.
The revenue, the total revenue. They didn't freeze the values, they didn't freeze the levy rates, they froze the dollars.
Right, and, and the obvious question is, I realize I'm not a layman anymore, but the obvious question is, how, how is that supposed to work?
That's a good question. Why, why would a local government try to encourage somebody to come in and develop something to increase their value? But you're, they aren't gonna get any more dollars. I mean, it, uh.
Yeah.
Since two thousand eighteen, I think pavement increases about seventy percent.
Yeah.
Bridge increases per square foot, and now they're raising, you know, now they're freezing revenue.
And it ties our hands, we can't get any incentive, you know?
Yeah. In, in, I mean, yes, the, getting back to your initial question, are we kicking the can down the road for, uh, twenty years? There's gonna be, there are discussions on what to do. Are we gonna start vacating roads?
And what will happen, the legislature's gonna change the rules from what they've done? Is that the solution to it?
Well, like, if, what, what do you want for an end factor? Do you wanna keep, do you wanna keep expenditures the same? Cause if, if that is the, if that is the goal, you've got to eliminate services. You've got to eliminate expenses. If you wanna keep the services the same, and the services cost more, there's gotta be some rent. And the efficiencies, I, I know everybody's talking about efficiencies right now, that's a, an acronym, and I don't know the, what everything stands for. But I, I would challenge them to come to Cassuth County. I would invite, I would, I'd like to see what, uh, what the salary, wage, what that would come out. But I'd, I'd only, I'd only support it if the results were actually going to be taken into consideration and implemented. If it comes back that, based on information that the Compensation Board produces for you yearly, and the board supervisors says we're gonna reduce everything by a hundred percent, what, what is this study good for? If it comes back with what the County Engineers Salary Survey has, and looking at total budgets, total miles, and it means that, it says that County Engineers' salary is less than what it should be, is it gonna be implemented?
Now, that's the other side of the coin, right? We just, we just went from what the revenue is gonna be to what, what we'd like the expenses to be.
Yeah, I mean, there's expenses, there's revenue. Every, every person employed in this courthouse is serving somebody.
Isn't that true, every person who works everywhere?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah.
Think it through, while you're sitting there, think it through. Everybody who's employed somewhere is serving somebody. I don't believe, I'm, I'm not getting into a discussion about how the level of service are, well, I, we can't, everybody's employed to serve somebody, it's a passion.
Okay, well then, so are we over-serving in Cassuth County?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't, I don't even know what that means.
Well, we, we could certainly reduce equipment and employees in the Road Department, but it might mean that it'll take forty-eight hours, two days to get roads, get the paved roads cleared.
After a snow.
After a snow, is that, is that?
All, all the reductions of, of salaries and equipment in the world are not gonna, when you compare it to the cost of, speaking of the Road Department, when you compare, compare it to the cost of facilities, almost a drop of a bucket, right? Compared to the cost of bridges and roads and, and everything.
Oh, that, yeah, I, I, the road right away alone is, if you take it times market value for farms.
I don't mean that, of course.
But I mean, it is.
Yeah, I just mean.
We take care of it, we maintain it.
Right, so, so the point, my point is, if, if, and I, I have no valid point, this is just what I gathered from listening. We, we can talk salaries and equipment all day long, but for your total budget, what it's gonna take to maintain the infrastructure is, is far more than what, what the salaries and, and equipment are.
Oh, yeah.
So now, so now we're back to, we can't cut enough to, things are gonna have to, if things don't improve on the revenue, and things are definitely gonna degrade on the, on the, on the infrastructure end, cause it's not keeping up. And we can't cut sal, we're not gonna cut salaries. We can't not raise salaries enough to solve that problem. So the problem is coming, seems like to me, just the little bit I've had, the problem's coming out of mandates out of the city. Duh, I, I, I hear ya, I hear ya.
They have, they've handcuffed, I believe, I believe that they have handcuffed local governments.
And, I mean, the thing that hasn't been said in that conversation is, they're elected the same way those of us here are as well. And when they're out on the campaign trail, property taxes are the number one
Yeah.
discussion piece amongst everything, so they're taking.
Well, who determines, who determines the property tax? Why aren't those same people coming and talking to the board supervisors? Talking to the city councils, telling them, um, that, I mean, that's who takes care of the local property taxes.
Their, their time, their local governments and hands, whereas, um, you know, okay, we're, they, they talk about the property tax is not going up, but if we don't have the revenue, we can't provide the service, and who's going to be upset if we can't provide the service? Our property taxpayers, so it's a vicious circle.
It is.
Well, I put four percent in the same revenues, and then we'll, and, and I'll give that information to Tammy. Is there any chance, will the board, will the board consider any increases to secondary road, uh, staff and the transfer station staff?
The people outside of the union, do me?
Uh, that's fine, if you wanna answer that question, sure. Anyone that's not covered by a collective.
Right. Well, it's a thing you. Yeah, yeah.
Anyone that's not, anyone in the, uh, secondary road department, engineers office, and the manager of the transfer station. The rest of the people are covered by a collective bargaining, is, will there be any consideration?
The only time I'll really know that for sure is once we get numbers. We need to see where we're sitting for fund balances, but.
And the secondary road fund, what, what do you wanna see for a minimum balance of the secondary road fund?
I think the, well, for general, we've always stuck to the, it's twenty-five percent. I don't know if that's what we've always looked at for that fund as well, but.
And you. Didn't you say if, uh, if we spend everything that's in our current budget year, we'll be at about three million?
Four. Yeah, you presented that with four.
I wrote it somewhere.
For this year?
Three point, three point nine is what you, I wrote down.
For twenty-five, twenty-six.
I think that's the end after this.
Yeah, that's for twenty-five, twenty-six.
This one coming up.
That's, that's what I said, yep.
We're, we're in fiscal twenty-five right now, so I guess that's what I was.
Yeah.
Four point three nine is where we're projected to be, the end of this.
At the end of this, yeah, four point four.
Four point what?
Three, nine.
And, and what's projected at the end of twenty-five is three point nine?
Yeah.
And, and with that projected balance, that's with those increases. And and with that projected balance, that's with those increases in that you proposed, right? So, yeah.
Yes.
Which, I mean, that that's figuring all those transfers that we were talking about before. Not to be a dead horse, we talked about it last year, but um, that, yeah, I'm not probably on the expenditure side yet. But it's a, I mean, if you go back to February twenty-one, twenty-two for revenues, to what's proposed for twenty-five, twenty-six, it's thirty-three and a half percent increase in total dollars. And that's not even counting the TIF, um.
That's a whole separate fund, the TIF.
I'm I'm aware, but um.
Where are you, where are you seeing that?
I did math between the total for those and the total for those. From there to there.
How much is the, how much is the uh, by outside your road balance, been reduced over those same amount of years?
Because we've been spending like. Uh, a lot, we've spent historically significantly more than what it was prior to that.
Well, the.
I mean, you can go back to twenty-one.
It's still hasn't everybody.
Yeah, that's right.
Everything's more expensive, you just, you can't operate on four years ago budget and costs because those costs are not the same. I guess what are you proposing to do with the revenue side on the three, those three things? Are you, you want to lower that? I mean, just fill it, so we know what you want.
I'd like to see where our fund balances are gonna be after everything's put together, and we got a look at that last week, but.
I just told you what that is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
For secondary road?
Anything that I put together for the budget is gonna affect the general, the balance in the general or the balance in the rural.
It it will, the transfers definitely affect the balance in the rural.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, if you're gonna change the transfers. That's, when I put this budget together, I'm not changing those transfers, so it's not gonna affect the balance of the general or the rural. Unless, I guess, the other one would be local option sales tax. And if the board desires to do that, you gotta let me know, because the secondary road fund balance will be different. Because revenues will not be the same, they'll be different, so um.
Is that your intention?
Well, we haven't really gotten even off the starting point past wages, so I mean. I don't know where you.
Talking in the balance right now.
Well, yeah, but, I mean.
But you brought those up and said it was an increase, so what is your intention with that thought?
Well, there's other lines that that would transpire to as well, but the, I mean, it's quarter after twelve, I don't, I don't know how many hours we wanna be here.
Can we finish this after lunch? Are you available after lunch?
Sure.
I think we need to finish Doug's budget, I mean, I really do.
Absolutely. I, I'll go, I'll go put together some numbers and get it to Tammy and and uh, she can print new page. Yeah, take me. You know, I, I don't know, by the end of an hour, I'll.
I mean, we do have, we do have some other things, we could go through those while you're.
Well, you gotta go to lunch.
You mean this afternoon while he's still doing that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And all the services, non-departmental, could correlate to some of these transfers, but.
What do we? Okay, so do we wanna meet back here at one fifteen and then one or one fifteen and then uh work through some of those other and then just plan on Doug coming back up here at two?
By the soon as he gets done.
Or, yeah, that works.
Cause those, because those other ones aren't taking anybody away from anything, so it.
No, they're not.
No.
Yeah.
So do we wanna just meet back at one o'clock and then?
Quarter after.
One fifteen?
I don't care what time we come back.
Well, we'll just call it one fifteen. Okay. We'll break until then.